This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, May 9th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first order of business is open forum. So first off, congratulations to both Tom and our newest Select Board member, Chris Barrett. Congratulations, Chris. Welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you for the next three years.
Happy to be here.
Then, we would also like to welcome Pam McNiff, who is our new project procurement specialist. Has she started yet?
Yes, she started yesterday.
Okay, well, welcome Pam. We look forward to working with you. And we'd also like to thank Nicole Lavelette and Kathy Wilson for assisting in the town manager's office for the past four, six weeks, helping her out and helping the Select Board out as well. It's much appreciated that you two came in and helped and picked up the pieces. And last, my last announcement for public forum is that I'm sure many of us remember when the body of an unidentified woman was found along Providence Road four years ago. This week, the Middlesex DA's office announced that David Perez of East Hampton pled guilty to improper disposal of body and destruction of evidence, and he was sentenced to seven years in state prison. The arrest of Mr. Perez was the direct result of the hard work and effort and time and investigation by the Westford Police Department, who were able both to identify the woman and Mr. Perez. It's a credit to our police department, and it's a further reminder to all of us of what a great police department we have and what they do every day to keep us safe. So I'd like to thank our police department and all of those who were involved in that investigation. Scott, I know you had some things.
Yes, two things for me. So first, congratulations to new Fire Captain Dave LaFave, Fire Lieutenant Tim Viggers, and new Fire Protection and Safety Officer Ryan Monat. I was there with Kristen and Patty for their approach ceremony just about an hour ago. So congratulations to our newest leadership in the fire department. And secondly, I wanted to also thank the couple of people in town. I have a plant at Community Garden along with 100 other of my best friends. And we opened up last weekend. I wanted to thank a couple of people, in particular Jesse Byer, for doing all the work of keeping track of who had paid and who hasn't paid out of all those gardeners. And secondly, to Jonathan Revis and his team, because the deer fencing, if it wasn't there, we'd have no crop, but we'd have a lot of deer. So all the work from Howie Department or Parks and Rec Department for deer fencing, tilling, you know, all that work that makes our life more productive. And if you didn't see really cool lock, you've got to go see what Jonathan devised for the gardens during COVID. We couldn't open unless we had a touch-free lock system, latch system. He came up with some amazing device. You can now walk with your arms are full of plants, take your elbow and hit it, and it will open up for you. So if you need ideas on how to make a latch work really cool, check out Jonathan's work.
Great. Anybody else have anything? Tom?
We should probably thank the Kiwanis for hosting a great community event. The Alamo Blossom Festival is coming up this weekend, so please, please take part in that. Lots of great activities. And you can start with pancakes at Pancake Breakfast, First Parish Church. That'll kick off at eight. Hope to see you all there.
Okay. Anybody from the audience? Okay, don't see anybody. So we're at our 7:05 PM item, and that is a reorganization of the board.
She's so excited.
So we haven't done this for a few years for a lot of reasons, but it has, our tradition was that after town elections, we organize the board with a new chair and a new vice chair. So we are going to do that tonight. Kristen, this is the one time you actually get to partake in our meeting.
Oh, the gavel. My honor.
Where you ask for nominations for chair, and nominations are made, and then you get to take the vote, and then that's all you get to do tonight.
That's all I need. That's fine. Thank you. That's more than enough. All set? All right. Is there anyone who would like to nominate a chair for Select Board member? Scott?
So I'd like to do two things. One is to thank Andrea for leadership during COVID, which lasted for, I think, two terms. Then we had a transfer of town manager, and she had been through it before. We hired Jody, did such a good job, we said, well, let you hire Kristen. So thank you, Andrea, for three years, perhaps, you know, the longest term of any chair since like 1800 or something. So thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I would nominate Tom Clay as, as our next chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Scott Hazelton.
I would defer to Tom. I've done it before. He's vice chair, let him, let him go for it.
Are there any other nominations before we ask for a motion?
Do you have to have a second?
Right. So is there a motion to nominate to Tom Clay as chairperson? That was the motion?
That was.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five to zero. So Tom, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I, Scott said it well, so I won't spend too much more time, but thank you. We're very grateful for your leadership for a lot. A lot of things happened during those three years, and so all, much appreciated. And I will entertain a nomination for vice chair.
I'll nominate Scott.
Do I have a second?
I'll say without.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, there being none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of Scott Hazelton for vice chair?
Aye.
Congratulations, Scott.
Thanks.
And do we also do clerk again? Okay.
Unless, John, do you want to stay as clerk?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, it's up to you.
Yeah.
Would you like to stay on? Okay, great. Thank you. We're very, very fortunate to have you.
I'll nominate John.
A second.
Any other nominations? Okay. All in favor?
You're not voting for yourself?
So is that four to one?
Four, four, zero.
Four, zero, one.
Wait a minute. Does that mean you do not have confidence in yourself to be?
It's just I don't know who to blame, you know?
We'll look forward to that.
You'll vote for yourself. Okay, so five to zero.
Okay. Our next item, 7:10, is a public hearing, so I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. So this is a public hearing, electric conduits petition, request from National Grid to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits to be located as listed here in the agenda. Do we have a representative here from National Grid? Either physically or online?
It's not quite 7:10.
Someone's raising their hand. Eric, can you check what the person raised in their hand?
It looks like we do have somebody.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. If we could just welcome them.
Hi, Eric, can you give me?
Yes.
I'm Julie from National Grid.
Welcome. Welcome.
Hi.
So I'm the engineer for this project.
Just wanted to speak to a few points on it. We're looking to service the new Nokia facility that'll be in the development off of Robbins Road. So this additional load will mean that we need to build a new feeder that will also allow us with the new feeder, a little more flexibility to reduce outage times in the area with the additional feeder. And so we'll be installing about 3,800 feet of Dutch bank along Comfort Road, Littleton Road, and on Robbins Road. So that's kind of the overview, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask them.
Great, thanks, Joanna. I know that our Director of Public Works, Steve Cronin, had a number of questions for you. Have you had a chance to, to see those questions and respond to them?
I have not seen those questions.
Okay. I think we would all benefit from both his questions and the answers to the questions. Is this time-sensitive in any way? Because it seems like it might be most efficient if we made sure you got those and had a chance to respond to them in detail, rather than trying to do that here live. What we would do is we'd continue this to the next meeting. I'm wondering if that presents an obstacle to your schedule.
When would the next meeting be?
It's two weeks from today.
I think that would be okay. I, I don't think I received those questions, so I can, I can reach out to someone at the grid.
We did send them out to whoever submitted the poll petition. Was it Vincent or Victor? I'll try to look that up.
Joanna, could you just give a call to the town manager's office tomorrow and just so we make sure we've got your contact info and get you the questions?
I'm sorry, I, I do have the questions. I just, I just found them. So I can, I can go through them now.
I think, Joanna, I think it might be a little bit better if, if you answered them in writing and then we had a chance to look at those and then, rather than do that live here.
You should also connect with Steve Cronin, our Director of Public Works, you know, in case there are issues between the two of them before it comes back here.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay. So Joanna, if you could just connect with the town office, make sure you, oh, it sounds like you do have the question, so that's good. And you can also call and talk to Steve Cronin, who's the Director of Public Works here, and if there's any back and forth needed to get those things ironed out for our next meeting.
Okay, will be.
Okay. So, let's see, do I need a motion to continue, or do I just continue?
No, we just continue. We have to continue to a date, to a time certain.
Time and date certain.
Okay. Kristen, does it make sense to do the same, same time?
We can do 7:10 on May 23rd.
Okay. Okay. So Joanna, we're continuing this to the same time on May 23rd.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Joanna. Okay. Next up, we have the consent agenda, to request to approve the following. First is Town Common and Bandstand. The event is the Westford Historical Society House Tour Lunch. That's going to be a lot of fun. Applicant is Leslie Howard. The date is September 23rd, and the time is 11:00 to 2:00. There's a banner request for the Winter Sporting Goods Sale. The applicant is Malik Shah on behalf of the Boy Scout Troop 159. The dates there are Saturday, October 28th through Tuesday, November 7th, and that's located at First Parish Church. There's a farmery winery license. The applicant is Aronap Sellers, LLC. The dates are June 20th through August 22nd. Time is 2:30 to 6:30, and that's at the Roden Bush Community Center. Then there's a special license request for the County Fair Day. The applicant is Good Pick and Farm. The date is June 10th, and the time is 11:00 to 6:00, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Location is Good Pick and Farms, 5 Gould Road. There's another event request, Concerts at Good Pick and Farm. Applicant is Good Pick and Farm. It's Friday, June 23rd, July 7th, July 21st, and August 4th, August 18th, and August 25th. Time is 5:30 to 9:00. Location is Good Pick and Farm. There's a First Annual Pig Roast, also at Good Pick and Farm, Saturday, July 22nd, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There's a Harvest Fest at Good Pick and Farm. The date is September 16th, time 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There's an event, Oktoberfest, also at Good Pick and Farm, on October 14th, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And there's a Holiday Lights Event on November 25th, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that. Next up is 7:25, Review Draft Charge and Act to Create Budget Task Force. Eric, could you put up the draft charge? Those of you that have it in your packet. So this does a good job of explaining what this is. The, in a previous meeting, we talked about some of the budget challenges that'll be coming up in our next cycle. Things like much higher energy costs, much higher waste disposal costs. We know that we're in a high inflation environment, so a lot of costs are going up faster than the Prop 2.5 cap can easily accommodate. So the idea here is to create a budget task force with the composition that you see here. And the deliverable would really be a careful analysis of how Westford makes their spending allocation choices, how other towns in similar circumstances have made their choices, what some of the new revenue opportunities are, what some of the cost savings opportunities are, and to bring that before, back to all the boards to take a look at and digest before we get too far into next year's budget cycle. So that's the intent. Kristen did a super job of scouring other communities that have done similar things. We're not alone. Many communities have done something similar. We've got a lot of great models to choose from. There's two compositions here for your consideration tonight, the difference being, one of them has the, let's see, one has the town finance director, one, basically everyone's a vote, voting member, and one, two folks are held back as non-voting members, the town manager and school finance director. I think Kristen and I were interested in your take on this, as to which one we would pursue. So any questions about the budget task force, just in general, and then, I guess, feedback on the composition? Yes?
So, looking at the, the membership, I think if, my personal opinion is if the school superintendent and the town finance director are going to be voting members, then the town manager and the school finance director should be voting members. I think that everybody should be voting members, or the four people who are staff members, town staff members, superintendent, manager, and the two finance directors should not be voting members. But I don't think you can put, pick two and not pick the other, and not put the other two on. So for me, it's either all nine or five. But the other question that I have is that it, you wrote here, "The budget task force shall be charged with recommending a five-year sustainable fiscal plan." Don't, don't we now, and maybe, I know I see Dan's in the audience, don't we now have a five-year fiscal plan? And don't you do that when you're doing our budgets during the year?
Dan would like to field that.
Sure. It's part of the, the charge that we have in the Finance Department is to have a five-year model. However, not, you know, there is some concern with the level of expenses that are coming up, so we don't have those balanced at this point. So decisions need to be made about expenses and revenue and how we want to address those situations. So it is currently our charge to do so, though.
So I guess my question is, do you see this as supplementing what you're doing or replacing what you're doing? Or how do you see the two interfacing?
It's going to supplement and give me more direction on how to proceed with the model. But we'll use the same model that we already have, but again, just have more input from other people.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Scott?
Yeah, it's almost the same two things Andrea had. I was thinking actually differently, that if you want to have symmetry, either the budget director and school budget director vote, and town manager and superintendent don't, or the other way around. But it seemed odd, you've got one department head and one budget director. It didn't make a lot of sense to me. I figured that, I mean, so that other town did it that way, we copied it. But I would, I was thinking originally, yeah, two peers vote, two peers don't vote, or Andrea's idea of, you know, all four vote, but it seems like an awkward arrangement the way, the way it's written. In other words, I guess I don't, I guess a more substantive comment is, I don't really want to see a recommendation on, A, one single recommendation, singular, on the budget process for five years. What I would like to see, I think, speaking of myself only, but, yeah, we know we've got some problems coming, and there are traces to be made, but this board's job is to make that, those traces with other town boards in conjunction, but ultimately, the budget comes here. So I'd like to know, okay, so what are the trade-offs? If we have this, we can, we can project our current time, our current budget cycle, and we can see that we're probably going to be behind the curve in year three, four, five someplace. So you get there either through some kind of a enhancement, you get more grants, you get fees, you do override, whatever, or you cut services and, you know, without getting into where do you cut, but you know, what is the degree of cuts required in terms of dollar value? You know, knowing that decision, we can, I think, knowing those facts, you can make a better decision. So I think it's a good idea. I'd like to kind of make it more into a, you know, baseline forecast, and then, you know, a couple of alternative trends around that in terms of financing expenses as opposed to just one recommendation.
Yes, an excellent point, Scott. So we are lucky that there are other examples out there that have been done so far, and many of them take the approach you're talking about, more like a list of options, like, here's an area relative to other towns where we're overspending. One opportunity we'd be, that we could, you know, realign for this budget to this level. You know, here's how another community has approached this particular thing, which might be a revenue enhancement option. So I think the idea would be to come back with sort of a pick list of things, but the policy decision about what the budget actually becomes is obviously the board's responsibility.
I guess also make sure we've got, you know, the way we do things now, there's a binder this thick for town budget, there's one about that thick for the water department, there's one about that thick for schools, because they have a high-level budget, which, because the school committee goes through all that themselves, and we see the finished product. This task force, I think, should be able to see the, all the details of all the budgets in order to make those kinds of determinations.
Yep. It's another excellent point. I'll make note of that. Any other, yep, Chris?
So I think this is a wonderful idea. I align with Andrea's thinking. My feeling is probably more towards nine than five, but I do think you have to have that balance representation between school and town. My concern is, this is very, it's going to be very difficult to pull this off and the timing that we need it. And even October 1st is pushing it, right? As we get into the budget cycle, that's, you know, not necessarily, I would love to see this information earlier. So is there an opportunity here to maybe leverage some of our existing committees to help shoulder some of this burden? And I'm thinking specifically Capital Planning, who, you know, works hard to, with the town and departments and committees to come up with a five-year plan for capital needs. Maybe they can work in parallel with this group, because it's going to take, I think, a lot of effort to determine or get an accurate five-year plan, or tighten up what we currently have on that committee, and then that can be fed into this, this group, so that they're not trying to repeat work that's already being done. Now, Capital Planning typically only meets towards the end of the year, as we're getting into the budget season, so we'd have to, you know, see if they're available to do that. But I think that would help us reach this aggressive timeline.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion. It'd be great to get their, get their input and their eyes on it, so that's a great thought. Any other general comments? It seems like maybe, my own personal take was, I think that, that everybody who's a member of this has got a really important voice, and I would love to hear how they vote. So I'd be more in favor of nine than, than maybe the reconfigured five or seven that we talked about. It seems like maybe we're more or less convening on that, more or less converging on that? Okay. The, this has two members at large, so if we vote to basically charge this committee tonight, I think as soon as tomorrow, we would get the citizen action form up.
Yes, I've already teed that, them up to be ready to go for tomorrow.
Okay, good. And to Chris's point, in order to meet this very aggressive timeline, we would ask that people submit their, their interest, their form representing their interest, as soon as they can, so that we could actually appoint in the next meeting in two weeks who those two members will be.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't know if there's any other business on this except to go ahead and vote on the charge, so.
Just make a comment. So right now, it says, "The budget task force shall be charged with recommending a five-year sustainable fiscal plan." Do we want, based upon Scott's recommendation, would you like to change that to say something else, like a variety or a top three or something?
Options to help support.
Options.
Yeah, options to help support the creation of a sustainable five-year plan. So with, with that amendment, I guess, do I have a motion to basically tar, create the budget task force and give them this charge with the nine-member voting configuration?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's the topic of sort of participation from the Select Board. I've, I've been somewhat involved in this already and would love to stay connected to it. I think like other task forces we've had, though, we would invite, we'd post all the meetings, anyone who would like to take part, we would invite to join us for those. So just, I think that we're planning to have them bi-weekly. I think we're going to plan to have them during the lunch slot, probably the first one, the Friday after the appointment in our next meeting. And then we'll canvass in that meeting to see what works best for everybody on it. And we'll try to keep it as transparent as we can.
So I'll move to appoint you as our representative to the budget task force.
One second.
I'll say without.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Tom, just a quick follow-up question. So you mentioned that you're planning on holding meetings during the lunch hour. For residents that might be interested in joining this committee, will there be a hybrid option? Are these going to be virtual meetings? What do you consider as the lunch hour, just so people have an understanding of what they're committing?
I think we're thinking noon to 1:00. It will be virtual. In fact, one of the committee members, Christina Green, is still in Hawaii, so she'll be joining hybrid. And just because of the fact that people who are working may be able to squeeze out their lunch hour, I would imagine almost everyone will be virtual. They might be entirely virtual, actually. So there may not be a physical, physical meeting. We also will be hosting some public information sessions outside of the workday, but the preference for organizing it during the workday is because this is a very staff-heavy task force, and we want to, you know, be respectful of their time.
Makes sense.
Okay.
And the Finance Committee have, will be posting a meeting for Friday at 1:30, where they will be officially voting their member at that time.
Okay, very good.
So they'll get more publicity on that meeting.
And I think that, does the school committee already appointed Valerie? Or is that yet to happen?
I don't think they did that.
They haven't done yet? Okay, waiting for this?
I think they're waiting.
Somebody will, will circle it with Paul, who's our of the Capital Planning Committee, just to let him know this is going on.
Yeah, and get his input on what the best way to participate would be.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. We are a little bit ahead. The plane to talk about with our 7:45 item, which is continuation of the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funding request to determine allocations. And tonight, I guess, Dan, are you going to present sort of an opening, and then we'll walk through the third bunch, as we've done in other meetings?
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. And then we have people online and here that will present the actual topics here. So just to recap where we're at, we've received over 7.4 million to date. We have received all that money. So far, the Select Board has approved 77 projects totaling just over $5.6 million. Our current balance right now is $1,781,412.90. Before us tonight, we do have 15 projects listed in the packet, however, two have requested to hold off for now, the items number 23 and 24, from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. So that leaves us with 13 projects for review tonight. So up first, we have listed in here, the Comprehensive Program to promote equity in social emotional health for students and staff in Western public schools. I believe, Chris Sanders, are you?
Yes. Yes.
Do you want to come forward, Chris?
Yes. And Eric, if you're able to pull up the PowerPoint presentation that Chris sent over, that would be great. Thank you.
So thanks for giving me a chance to talk to these. Sorry, I've lost my voice, but I'll do my best here. So here we are with our three remaining requests. You might remember, we had a kind of a packet of them. We funded, you funded some in a previous iteration. These are the three outstanding requests from the schools. And so it's an independent district-wide equity audit, restorative practices, training and coaching, and collaborative problem-solving professional development. And I'll start by talking about the equity audit, which is the next slide. I'm not going to read this. I think you have a general sense of what an equity audit is, but it's really a chance to kind of take an MRI of, of how we're doing with respected equity and inclusion in the school district, and really with a focus on student and impact on students. Why do we need it? We have an ongoing commitment to not only social emotional learning, but diversity, equity, and inclusion. I mean, that's an ongoing, has been for a while, a real thrust and commitment, both for the, the school committee and for the administration. We know that there's a need based on not just, you know, there's anecdotally, I think, we have a sense of people, you know, raising concerns, but we also have data from our district panorama survey and also from the town DEI committee's family or community survey from last year. I think we could see some of the needs highlighted there. We have put this in our recently adopted three-year strategic district improvement plan, which I'll mention a couple of times probably tonight. And it, it really is one of the main thrusts. So we have four, four strategic goals and it's, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion are included in two of them. And I think we just know, I mean, in general, all institutions are taking a closer look and I think we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can. Some of the things you'd expect to see in equity audit would be surveys, kind of community-wide across the district, and then focus groups, and then even one-on-one interviews with key district personnel just to get a sense of the pulse of where we are and how we're doing. And then there'd be a lot of kind of looking at data, looking at documentation, looking at our, our curriculum, looking at our policies. And then hiring practices, making sure that our staff as best possible reflects our student population so that they can see themselves in our staff. And then lastly, we just mentioned community involvement. I think town DEI has already expressed their interest in this, their support of this. I think we'd want to be able to collaborate with them through the audit process. So the request is for $75,000. We'd be looking to work with outside independent. We think that's important that we have somebody who has that unbiased lens on the district to come in and help us find what, what we're doing well and what we can do better with regard to equity. Next up is restorative practices, training and coaching. Restorative practices, I think.
Chris, would you mind if we stopped after each of the three and had questions?
Sure.
Okay, Andrew, please.
I guess, my question is, when you do this, is this, I'm trying to, I'm wondering if this is just solely going to be focused on the schools or if, I mean, some of the concerns that you're expressing, I think, are also town-wide concerns. And so I guess, not to minimize what you folks want to do in the schools, and I think it's very important, but I'm wondering if there's a, there's an opportunity, at least in a few areas, for example, hiring practices or perhaps policies that we might be able to fold in the commu, the town at wide into that audit. And so I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but it might be, I'm wondering if it's something we might consider.
Yeah, I think, I think our sense is, I think you're right, there are places that there's overlap. I also think from what we've seen, when districts do these audits, there's a lot that's very education-focused, right? It's a lot of curriculum, it's a lot of instruction, discipline, and things like that. So I think maybe the, and I don't know, Catherine, if from your, what you've seen, if we have a sense, but, you know, maybe it's a, you know, a quarter of it's kind of an overlap and the rest isn't.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think there definitely, especially with regard to HR practices and things like that, there would be a, a point of overlap. Is that?
We, we also.
Could you, could you please come up?
Oh, sorry.
No problem. If you'd like, we can bring up another chair or.
I can just, that's fine. We also get to work with those independent consultants to kind of construct, what are those questions or areas we want to focus on at the start of the process as well. So we have the ability to kind of put that input in there that if there's areas that can overlap and specifically in the likes of hiring and policies and kind of practices and procedures, we can absolutely kind of fold that in into the kind of forming of what is the, kind of essentially a research project for, with these consultants.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll have a chance to answer, ask questions at the end, but any other questions that pop into mind so far regarding the equity? Please, Chris?
So just a quick one, the $75,000 number, how was that determined?
By looking at a number, we kind of surveyed a lot of districts, mostly in the state, that have done comparable audits and we kind of looked at what they did and what the output was, and that sort of gave us a sense of what we would be aiming for. There's a range, as you can imagine. There were some that were more and some that were less.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I think we're good. Why don't we continue?
Okay, sure. Okay, so restorative practices, I've got a slide that says what are restorative practices? Because I think a lot of people, you know, we've talked about it, we've heard about it. I'm not going to read it, but I, there are some bolded words that I think are important. Healthy communities, relationships, healthy dialogue, mutual understanding, empathy, sense of connection, capacity to handle conflict. So I encourage you to, you know, you can kind of read that. And, oh, and I, I should have mentioned before, we did submit documents for the packet that go into more detail in all three of our requests. So there's certainly more information in those that I encourage everyone to take a look at. And I think with restorative practices, it's especially tough because sometimes it can feel a little hard to define or people aren't familiar with it. So, you know, in the packet, I included a video that really shows a really nice example of how it's used in schools. But a question that comes up too is, we talked about restorative justice and restorative practices. Are they the same thing? I say mostly, almost. There, there really is, there, they share the same fundamentals. And so I think it's useful to talk a little bit about restorative justice, kind of traditionally. And the simplest way I've seen it explained is to compare it to what we, a more traditional retributive justice system. And this could also apply to school discipline as well. It's really anytime there's, you know, there's something, a law, a rule, that's been broken. Traditionally, we would ask, what's been broken, who's to blame, and what consequences should be given? In a restorative approach, the questions look more like, who or what has been harmed? And the what means it could be a community, it could be more than just individuals. What are their needs and who's obligated to fulfill those needs? So it's just kind of a shifting of how you look at these things. And what it lets you do is go into, I think, a lot more of the underlying issues and causes of conflict and harm. And, and so speaking of that underlying, those underlying issues, this is a model, a nice model of how schools use restorative practices. And so you see the bulk of it is this foundational piece that's really about building community, building skills in our, in our young people. Social emotional capacity and in generally just kind of the culture and climate of a district. And a lot of that work is done through community-building restorative circles. And so what this might look like in a school district is, you know, in middle school and high school, we have advisory period, which is a non, kind of a non-academic class period. It might be the advisory teacher leading the class in a restorative circle that sometimes maybe just get-to-know-you kind of things at the beginning of a school year. But as those relationships develop, as the trust in that group develop, you can tackle meatier, weightier issues that might be on students' minds. And it's a way, it's a structured way of doing that that we don't have right now. And we've talked, you know, we've talked about DEI issues, DEI issues, we've talked about social emotional health issues. And a lot of it's how do we have these conversations? And this gives you a framework for doing that. And then as you go up kind of the pyramid, you do see things when, okay, there's behavioral issues, kind of the early intervention. You have restorative chats that again, try to get to the heart of what's going on before it gets to, you know, something more severe. And, but sometimes things do percolate and bubble up. There might be serious harms, serious conflicts, serious misconduct. And then you can use a restorative approach also to deal in the aftermath of that. But the idea is prevention at the early stages. And then, excuse me, why does our district need it? We've talked about an emphasis on social emotional health. This is a way of building trusting relationships that help foster that health and that, and that supportive environment for our students and for our staff. Diversity, equity, inclusion, I talked about the, we've seen in our surveys a need to have these conversations around DEI that we haven't really known how to have. And this would give a vehicle for having those relationships and those conversations in a, kind of in a trusting way. Discipline, obviously, restorative justice can be used for discipline. So this, you, you see schools that implement restorative practices have fewer suspensions, fewer expulsions, fewer office visits and things like that. Safety, a, a school where people feel heard, seen, trusted, is a school where generally people are going to feel safe and want to help maintain that safety. Staff, all the things that, all the benefits that students get, staff can get to better relationships with their students and with each other. And it's another tool that they have to connect with their students and to handle, you know, conduct issues that come up. Educational outcomes, really everything that comes before this, you need those fundamentals in place before a student can learn. So if they don't feel, if they don't feel respected and valued and safe in school, they can't, they're not ready to learn. And so these help support that. And lastly, legal compliance, there is legislation in the fall that changes the MGL's chapter 71, section? Thirty-seven H and three quarters, that says that districts cannot expel or suspend a student until they have tried alternative methods. And those, they cite four alternative methods, conflict, conflict resolution, mediation, restorative practices, and collaborative problem solving. So there is actually a, a need for us to develop these alternative methods by statute. Reiterating the request, it's $75,000. We're looking at implementing it over three years of professional development and training. We've learned, or other districts have learned that it takes time to build the capacity to do restorative practices in schools. So we want to do it kind of gradually and cautiously and in a way that would endure. And then lastly, are there people doing this absolutely? Like I said, in Massachusetts, you now have, have to at least consider that as one of your alternatives to suspension and expulsion. And here's a list of other districts who have implemented restorative practices programs in the past few years. Okay, questions on that?
Yes, Andrew.
So I guess my first question is, is this a program that will be implemented across all, all schools or is it?
Good question. We think right now with that funding, we would probably start at Westford Academy and then maybe be able to bring it to the middle schools as well. There'd be benefit at all levels. But we think, just being realistic, that's where, right now, may, may be the highest need and the most practicality of implementing it is. And then the next thing, collaborative problem solving, we're looking at the elementary. And so they, they actually dovetail nicely together.
Oh, good. That answers my question as to how these two were going to go together. I guess I was like, isn't one like the other, but we can.
They are, they are, yes.
And then I guess, I'm just thinking of this sort of practically how this works. So what you said in your materials is that there's training for select staff members. So I guess is this, and that it's rolled, rolled out over three years. So is this like selecting staff member, different staff members each year so that you're expanding the group that's had this training?
I think that's what we'd be looking to do, yes.
The idea?
Yep. And then we might, we'll have to look at, and we, you know, it might become a kind of a train-the-trainer model too where those staff then can, can then help in future years, after the, the three years, can help propagate it more throughout the, you know, throughout the school, but then also down to the lower levels as well. And that's what other districts, I think, have done with success is doing it that way versus trying to train every teacher in the district in like a, a one-day professional development.
Well, that was my concern because quite frankly, I didn't see that working. And, and then wondering, you do a one-day training and, you know, 18 months from now, everybody's forgotten what their one-day training was and you've, this has gone for naught. So that actually answers my question with that. So, thank you.
Other questions for this? Okay.
Okay, last one. Collaborative problem solving. Okay, and again, I'm not going to read this slide, but really it's a way of looking at student behavior, especially, you know, challenging disruptive behavior and looking at, it's a set of tools that really address not just the behavior, but some of the underlying concerns. And so I think one synopsis that I think really covers it is the statement that students will do well when they can. And so when students, especially our younger students, who sometimes don't even know what's going on internally, right? Behavior is communication. And it's maybe more traditional disciplinary approaches of rewards and punishments sometimes don't get at the underlying behavior. This helps our staff understand and help develop the skills in our students that are, again, more enduring and will help prevent future concerns and behavior. Why does our district need it? We know that there have been increased, increased behavioral needs, especially in elementary, especially since COVID. And so this is, you know, this is very timely. Emphasis on equity and discipline. So we know that traditional discipline sometimes can have increase or disproportionate adverse effects on students who have perhaps disabilities, learning disabilities, students who maybe have emotional, emotional disabilities. And so this ensures a little more care and concern with the wide range of students that we have. Teacher support, so this is just another, again, another tool that teachers can use in dealing with discipline and one that hopefully prevents future incidents a little bit better. And, yeah, prevents future incidents, that's all I was going to say. Legal compliance, same thing I talked about before, that new MGL change that set, and this was spelled out, collaborative problem solving is one of the alternatives that we need to look at instead of suspension and expulsion. Here's the request, 10,000 for professional development. It would be primarily for our building leadership. And then they would, they would help apply it at each building. We've had past professional development, it's been a few years, and so this would be really to enable and empower our building leadership to apply collaborative problem solving to discipline in the building. And it's widely used, it's widely accepted. It's developed, MGH Department of Psychiatry developed this a number of years ago and it's pretty well established. So that's the three requests. If you all have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Chris? So on this particular one, Chris, I was really excited to read this because I can see it has a lot of value. Is there an opportunity to see this expand a little bit so that we include the middle school? Because in my opinion, you know, we have kids in, you know, that are coming into middle school, their bodies are changing, hormones are raging, they're, you know, changing in their schedule, they have lack of, you know, outside free time. It's really hard for some of these kids to acclimate to that changing atmosphere. And as a result, you do see disciplinary issues. And I think middle school would be well-suited to take advantage of a program like this to help with those. So that was my one question, if we could maybe increase the scope. The second question would be, as a parent, I could see getting a lot of value out of this as well. So I would hope that perhaps there would be an opportunity, once we do teach school leadership, if they could perhaps run some seminars and open that up to the public so parents could take advantage of it. The best way, in my opinion, to learn something is to teach it. So if they can turn around and teach a roomful of parents some of these, you know, interventions and practices, it will be better not only for the schools, but also the families and the kids at the end of the day because they can now have this, you know, these skills or these, you know, these skills be applied at home as well as at school.
No, it's a great point. And we've had, we've had.
Yeah, just, just on that, we had Dr. Ross Green, CPAC last year in conjunction with the Special Education Department hosted Dr. Ross Green, who's one of the experts who developed collaborative problem solving. So they do webinars that parents, staff, families can all attend. And we had a huge turnout and we got a lot of really positive feedback from other parents because if you ask any CPAC parent, they all know what collaborative problem solving is. But we had a lot of non-CPAC parents attend and they all really liked and appreciated how the training was delivered. So, yeah, we can certainly do something like that again. I think it would be important to.
Especially as we're implementing, it'd be nice to dovetail it with parent education, yeah. So I think that's a great idea.
So would you need more money to broaden this to the middle school level?
That would probably be the case, I would say. I would still, I mean, I would, we can look at that. I think I'd advocate for starting with elementary and then look at, I think, we'd have an idea of how collaborative problem solving and then the restorative practices, how we want to bring them into the middle school. To Andrea's point, there is a lot of overlap. So that's very astute of you. There's a lot of overlap. I mean, I think listening, empathy, and collaboration are things that are kind of undergird all three. And so there is a lot of overlap between the two and some of the techniques and methodologies, methodologies and philosophies are, are a match. And so I think we would just look at how we want to do that.
I mean, I guess my concern is the same as yours. You seem to be, like, there's something for the elementary schools and this restorative for the academy. I, I don't want to see our middle schoolers kind of get lost in it and, you know, because.
I think there's definitely scope for that. I mean, I think, we, we briefly talked about it earlier about, you know, we've got to building principals at, at the middle school and to engage them. I know as well, just as, just as a side note, as a teacher before in Scotland, I used both of these practices and it was embedded across the entire school and district. So you can see how the middle schools could use both because of that kind of age group mix, yeah.
Yeah, we could look to see, I'd, I'd have to look at what the, what the 10,000, what it included and how many personnel that could be. So it could be a PD that we could include other principals as well. I just don't, I don't remember.
It's up to 10 people, I think, but yeah.
So we'd begin, yeah, we, we could probably accommodate, thank you.
Great. Any other, any other questions on this one? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. And up next is Steve in GIS, system upgrades?
That's correct, for project number six for 27,000.
Steve, can you just give us an idea of what's contained in that?
Yep, this is to support the Brightly Computerized Maintenance Management System.
GIS.
Oh, GIS, sorry, I apologize. So this is to upgrade our existing GIS system from a server-based system to basically a cloud-based system, the ArcGIS Enterprise version. Basically, we've reached the capacity of the existing system that we have and really can't add anything additional to it at this point. So, you know, in order to implement some of the initiatives we're working on, including the use of field devices and to support public safety, you know, the assessor and some of our other departments, we're looking to upgrade the existing system to, to enterprise. So this request initially came forward along with the request to upgrade our GIS viewer. It was tabled at that time because the GIS viewer was really the higher priority. But at this point, you know, we've really, as I said, reached the capacity and. But at this point, you know, we've really, as I said, reached the capacity and, you know, we need to upgrade this system if we want to be able to continue to support our departments.
Questions for Steve?
Being on the cloud, does that increase security risk with this?
Actually, no. We've been working pretty closely with IT, and this will allow us to separate our G.I.S. infrastructure from the town and actually make it more secure by not allowing people essentially to tunnel in to access our G.I.S. information. So we'd essentially be pushing it out of the town's network and accessing that way.
Is this, this twenty-seven thousand is for the implementation. Does that cause any increase in operations and maintenance costs going forward?
No. So it wouldn't increase the support long-term. So we continue to fund the support in the existing IT budget that we use now. It would replace basically the support costs that we have for the current G.I.S. version.
Steve, in normal times, non-ARPA times, if you need something like that, this would go through your capital planning process?
Typically, yes. Yep.
Chris? I'm sorry, Steve. Is it, there's no ongoing hosting fee associated with pushing this to the cloud?
There will be, but it'll be covered under the support. So as I said, we're going to be replacing the existing support that we have with our current G.I.S. version. And that cost would cover the hosting fees that would go along with this.
What's, what's the ballpark of the increase? Do you remember off the top of your head?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
We're going to likely be continuing to talk about this over a couple of meetings. So Steve, if you could just follow up with an email maybe on what that is for that question. Any other questions on this item? Okay.
Do you want Steve to just stay at the table and continue his pieces, or do you want to go in order of what's on the, on the chart?
Why don't you, why don't you stay put? Unless you want the up and down, you know, part of your steps or something. That's a good suggestion. So we're on nineteen?
Yes.
Yep. So this request is to support the Brightly Computerized Maintenance Management System that we implemented earlier this year. As you may remember, we were working with the Facilities Department on an RFQ to basically select a maintenance management system that all the departments could use in Public Works as well as Facilities. So the request that you have before you is to support two additional years, or partially support two additional years of, of support for the program. And then eventually, in I believe it's fiscal twenty-six, or twenty-five, rather, we would fully fund the support within the various department budgets. So we worked, worked up a funding model with Dan that would split it over Facilities, various Public Works Department, and School Departments.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we proceed to twenty?
Wait, what happened to seventeen and eighteen?
Oh, I think we're, weren't we hopping over, does Matt want to present those or?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're still on Steve. I missed Steve. Sorry.
But we'll let Steve finish out.
Yep. So the last request is, or the Water Department portion is for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred. Does Ray's, is Ray's portion in that as well?
Hi, yeah, it's including, Eric, can you get, see if Ray's out there? Please?
So this is a joint request essentially between the Water Department and the Health Department for PFAS-related expenses. The Water portion is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred to cover PFAS-associated sampling, engineering, and operational costs that we hadn't anticipated in this year's budget. So this is, those costs are just for fiscal year twenty-three. As I said, they include, you know, certified laboratory testing and investigatory sampling and identification of sources of PFAS in the system.
Okay. Any questions for Steve or Ray about what's involved?
Well, what's Ray's portion? Is it different from yours, Steve?
Yep. So Ray has an additional portion basically to reimburse residents for sampling of their private wells. She had identified a certain number of private wells around town that she might, her department would be able to support and assist in sampling. And it would be to reimburse those homeowners for costs associated with collecting samples that we would essentially be using to gather additional data on how much of a PFAS issue we have here in town.
And she and Mark are on, they're just muted and they don't have their camera on. So if you have questions for them, they are on to help answer.
That was my question, is what Ray's part of this was?
Just the math on this is Ray estimated about four hundred dollars for each test. So she requested twenty thousand dollars. So that could do about fifty tests on private wells.
Okay. Understood. Any questions on those? Or Ray or Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
I have a question for Ray, or whoever can answer the question. Really, so if there's only fifty tests for private well users, I mean, is there going to be any thought given to how that's going to be spread out among the residents that are on private wells so that we're not, you know, getting a whole bunch of people from one neighborhood? We're going to try and get a more representative sample from across the community.
So at this time, you know, speaking with the Water Department, we would open it to first come, first served. So there's really no way that we, we've thought of that we could, you know, single out certain neighborhoods or whatnot. Our hope was to get a representative sample. Speaking with a few labs, the average cost is about four hundred dollars per test. So this would hopefully offset, you know, fifty households, if you will. And again, it would only be for private drinking water, not for irrigation. We have been looking for quite a few grants now for two years to try to help the homeowners out.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Just a comment. First come, first served. You could wind up with these all in one neighborhood if you're not careful. I mean, wouldn't you think it would be better to spread it out so that, so that we get a sense of where there might be some problems? Instead of maybe having the possibility of a cluster? This would be like trying to get tickets to Taylor Swift.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, unless the Water Department has better expertise, I really wouldn't know where to start. You know, my understanding is PFAS isn't everything. So, you know, I'm really not sure as to where plumes may be, if you will, or exactly which neighborhoods might be impacted more than others.
Well, I think we know where all those wells are. It's twenty-five percent of the town. So we could, you know, pick so we get a coverage. And if there's an area that Steve thinks maybe might be higher, more vulnerable, we could concentrate in that. But I think this needs a reasonable target or just a plan that says, we're going to test in these areas and, and go from there.
So we have had some residents who have elected to test their wells voluntarily, and we could use that data to determine, you know, where we think we should expand upon testing. Obviously, you know, you want to see if it's isolated to just the individual property or if you have, you know, a couple wells that are, that are, that are impacted. But we could certainly look at the testing results that we have as well as the current data that we have from Water Department sampling and identify various locations throughout town to give us a more holistic picture on what kind of issue we really have here.
Great.
Most, most private wells are isolated to certain sections of town, you know, north of Route forty, south of Route ten. So I imagine, at least with Ray's portion, the majority of her sampling is probably going to occur in those areas.
Chris?
So once we have that data for the private well owners, I assume there'll be some way that we can communicate this out to residents who are on private wells saying, hey, we've done these fifty tests. You know, maybe we show a map showing, here's, here's the rate at which we detected PFAS in these various tests. The people are aware and can take action. Because I don't know how well this has been publicized as a problem. I think we are seeing more and more people getting knowledgeable about it. So that's helpful. But I think the town should take some leadership in getting the word out to private well owners about this issue and providing some... I think I've seen it in some of the Water Department literature. But we've got to, you know, continue to push that, I think. And I think it's going to be tough. I mean, for me, I, I didn't even bother getting the test. It was so expensive. I just went and did a remediation system, which wasn't cheap either. But I figured it was going to happen. So might as well just take the money I was going to do on the, you know, the test and put it towards the remediation system. Because at some point, something's going to go wrong with the well water, right? That's, that's just a given in this day and age. So I think the better we can inform our residents on this, you know, the better off they're going to be.
I think we have some options with the data that we collect. We could certainly do some targeted mailings and outreach that way. The other added benefit to this is we are participating in multi-district litigation to try to recoup some of the expenses that we have on both the Water Department and the private well side. So this data will allow us to help, you know, determine what our cleanup costs are going to be and maybe try to get some of that settlement money in the future.
Thank you.
In fact, your clever way, that was my question, was how would it gel with that class action suit? And have we had talked to the attorneys about what they want to see for, you know, for testing and evidence to help the cause?
Mark, do you want to speak to that?
Steve, I'm sorry. My, my audio is very choppy. So can you repeat the question?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, what kind of data is, are the attorneys looking for in terms of the multi-district litigation? And, you know, how would that impact the town's potential of a settlement?
They were basically looking for anything that we had, you know, drinking water well data, you know, public wells, that is. Any of the investigatory samples we collected, groundwater monitor wells, things like that. So essentially, they, they wanted anything that we had. And I provided that to them.
So we are cataloging all of our expenses as we go and including that in all of our submissions to, to the attorneys that are representing us. So, you know, it's our, our plan to submit everything that we incur over, you know, over this period to try to get some sort of reimbursement.
I guess what I think was, and PFAS has a whole range of chemicals, right? So is there any, and if you think about who's liable, I'm sure there's some differential based upon who produced what.
Yep.
So is there any value in knowing, you know, what PFAS we have in which parts of town, because that might point to the source?
Absolutely. So they're looking at, you know, all the suppliers or all the creators essentially of PFAS. So when we do the sampling, they're looking for several different compounds to basically determine, you know, who's responsible for what. You know, right now, the focus is primarily on, you know, creators of firefighting foam, but that is going to expand at some point to, you know, look at other compounds like, you know, water resistant materials and things to that effect. So any data that we get is going to be looking at, you know, several different compounds to try to, you know, put it in the essentially right bucket.
Yeah, because the least of our problems, the firefighting foam, you know where that's going to be, it's around drill sites. But the stuff that's in furniture, clothing, that could be every place. And all the auto repellent stuff, the stain preventers, that's, that's all PFAS.
Yeah. And we have a town that's primarily septic. You know, there's potential to really see those anywhere.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Steve. Let's hop back to number seventeen with Matt.
Good evening. Number seventeen is the, was for water improvement, water infrastructure improvements at East Boston camps within the Stony Brook Conservation Area. Every year when the camp gets opened up and the Water Department turns on the water, there's always a new leak. Our facility coordinator is usually very adept at repairing. But as described by one Water Department staff member, that system is Frankenstein and it's a, it's a myriad of construction techniques. Whatever was kind of the best practice at the time, you know, it's constantly being fixed. And so when the original ARPA requests were solicited, I thought it was a valuable use to improve the infrastructure, the water infrastructure up at the East Boston camp facilities so that, you know, hopefully we can spend less on, spend less on repairs and get it to a system that is more consistent with today's construction standards.
Okay. Are you describing just the water main or the water main and the septic tank, both together?
I was just doing seventeen here.
Questions on seventeen? Scott?
It also affects firefighting, correct? I mean, so there's, there's water for distribution for bathrooms and kitchen. There's also some modest amount of firefighting built there.
Yes, there are connections up there in the event of an emergency.
So this upgraded whole system then, basically?
Yeah.
Are you going to increase the capacity?
No, it was, you know, just to today's standards for the, to create consistency across the system so that, you know, when a repair, in the event a repair needs to be, we're not trying to fix plastic to, you know, cast iron to whatever was used at the day, the day they had it.
Okay. Why don't we talk about the septic tank?
At the end of the last camp season up there, it was brought to our attention that the septic tank at the Camp Cielo area, so the former day camp, effluent was bubbling out of the top of the septic system. We reached out to a local septic company to pump the tank, and it was filling back up. Upon a Title V inspection, they observed probably within eighteen inches of the effluent pipe of the septic tank that it was completely clogged with roots and vegetative mass. We have designed a new system to, again, today's standards. The Health Department was unable to, didn't have records on the date of the age of the system. So that probably says something about it. And so we're trying to upgrade or repair the system to today's standards. We've gotten an estimate from the designer that it would be in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. And as such, we are requesting the high end of that and any unused, unexpended funds would be returned and to the pot.
Matt, if this, again, if we weren't talking about COVID, this would typically get funded also through the capital process, a request like this?
Yes, or maybe reserve transfer. It could be if it's an emergency, yes. A reserve fund transfer could be used because this was unknown, we budgeted.
Okay. Next, any other questions?
I guess, can we operate the camp with, with it as it is? Or are we kind of, like, can we operate the camp to summer with that, in that condition? Or does it have to get fixed now?
It needs to be fixed now. The Rec Department utilizes this camp area for their outdoor summer opportunity. I always forget the name.
So I mean, that, that sort of escalates it to the emergency side of the docket.
Yes, Andrea.
And the estimate that you've gotten, have, has the designer been out actually to the site to look at East Boston camps and what would be involved in, in replacing it?
Yes, they've, they've, it's a full design, you know, it's, they sent a draft. They haven't stamped it yet. So...
I just, I don't want to surprise that, you know, they go out and it comes back and it's double the amount that we've just got an estimate for.
They, they found the soils very suitable, and I want to keep that as quiet as possible.
So the septic tank is more or less an emergency. Is the water main in the same category?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you.
I guess, if I could, so how long is it going to take to do the work and how's that line up with camp start?
You know, as, upon getting funding, you know, we'll be soliciting the, through COMBIs and, you know, receiving a quote for the work. And, you know, whoever can get there the first, the fastest and get it installed is kind of the desire to...
I mean, is this typically one month, three months? What's the...
I, I think it's one month. I mean, I think there are a lot of installers. It's, it's not a, from my conversation with the designer, it's not a complex system. It's, and it's fairly low volume because it is, you know, sees a seasonal use and B, a camp facility. So it's not, I don't think there's any, it wasn't conveyed to me that it would be tricky to install or anything of the sort.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do we have to go through state procurement for this?
Yes, he just said COMBIs. So yes, that will be procuring the services. It's over ten thousand.
Either now or at the end, if we want to categorize this as an emergency item, we could go ahead and vote this one, if that feels like where we're going with this.
Well, it sounds like if we can't operate the camp without it.
I think we have a problem.
I think it's either oper or it's transferred, but it has to get done, right?
Right. So I guess I'll entertain a motion for item eighteen if this body is interested in doing that.
Up to forty thousand dollars. So...
Up to forty thousand dollars.
Because if it, yeah.
We'll appropriate to forty thousand and then we'll turn back money at the end if that's the case, just so we have a set amount because it has to be...
Okay.
Second.
Well, I, my concern is, is if it goes above forty thousand, then will we just do a reserve fund transfer at that point? Or do we come, because I, my guess is we may have appropriated all our ARPA funds by then.
So hopefully it's not that much. We could either do a reserve fund transfer, a budget transfer in May, June, and July. So... so we'll, we'll find a solution for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I had a quick question before we even got to the motion.
Go ahead.
But that was, it, it's just the tank, not, is there a leaching field there as well?
It's tank in, the entire system.
It'll still take care of both.
Yeah. Where the, during the Title V, they weren't sure if there actually is a leaching pit or where it goes after the septic tank. So this is a system to today's standards with a leaching area, the Title V standards.
It's a bit scary.
Does this require, can I just ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Does this require any con-con filing?
No, the design was located completely out of the commission's jurisdiction.
Are you good with your question?
Good, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second.
John.
John, do you have a question?
I was just kind of puzzled because I thought the conservation commission had a lot of interest in that. I mean, it's covered by conservation restriction too, right?
Yes. There is a section of the conservation restriction that does allow for the repair of the septic systems within the camp areas as this system has been designed within the bounds. I'm, the preliminary discussion with the Westford Land Conservation, Land Preservation Foundation, they were receptive of replacing it. Do you need to follow up with them and get either concurrence that it is covered within the conservation, within the camp area of the conservation restriction or whether adjacent areas are, replacement in adjacent areas is also permitted?
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more. I'm sorry.
Good, Chris.
I mean, I just, I'm thinking through the type, the dates here. We, this is incredibly tight between now and when camp starts, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have, I've started the language for the RFP, I've started working on it, so we're at, you know.
Like, how long are we going to advertise the RFP for and then, you know?
It's usually two weeks. And it, but again, with, there are septic installers within one of the professional services of the combis, the state procurement. So there is a list of, a pre-approved list, yeah, of vendors. So it goes out to them, you know, we're not, any additional installers may certainly respond, but there are directed, it's kind of a direct blast to specific installers.
Point being though is that you, the fastest you could potentially award a contract is three weeks potentially?
Yeah, two, three weeks.
And then, you know, that's pushing us into basically June and then camp starts when?
After school finishes, so the end of June.
The last week of June.
Yeah. Right. It's, does rec know about this?
Yep, I've spoken with Michelle.
Okay. Hopefully she has a, has a plan B, just in case camp starts and there's.
I haven't spoken to her about that.
Yeah, it might be prudent given the timing, right? That we have a hundred plus kids show up and heavy equipment and.
Yeah, I think the, there's usually about thirty, so that, but I understand the concern.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll take a vote, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you for that and now we'll move to the next.
So Matt has number thirty-three as well, if you want him to keep him at the table or if you want him to come back.
I do want to keep him at the table, thank you, Krista.
Yeah, thank you. This is the, my last ARPA request, I promise. This is supplemental funding for the construction of the eighty-foot-long public footbridge within the O'Brien Farm Conservation Restriction. The Conservation Commission, along with the CR co-grantee, the Subway Valley Trustees, applied for CPA funds in two, twenty twenty-one. At the same time, we applied for a Mass Trails grant, which is a matching grant that was received a couple of weeks after town meeting in twenty twenty-one. The design and permitting occurred last year in twenty twenty-two. Beginning of twenty twenty-three, we solicited quotes, bids, quotes for the construction thereof. The lowest responsive, responsible, yeah, yeah, both of those, that's always confused me, was at sixty-five thousand dollars. We are asking for ninety-six hundred to cover the balance of what we current have in our budget or what was previously appropriated and the cost of construction. The Mass Trails grant was just shy of twenty-eight thousand dollars at that time.
Yeah, Andrea?
Can we go, can you go back to CPC and ask them for the additional funding?
The CP, the Mass Trails grant ends at the end of this year. It was awarded for two years. It, with town meeting scheduled for the beginning of October, I don't know how long the contract would be valid for, but we certainly could go back to, you know, put it on, request CPC, put it on the special town meeting in the fall. But it's just compressing that timeline, you know, for construction and not having any funding if, you know.
I, I guess, I, if we can, I think we should, I think we should go back to CPC, you know, CPC funded, you know, help fund the O'Brien.
So Mass Trails grant expires December thirty-first?
Yes.
And so if CPC approves and we go October sixteenth, it's the concern of are we going to have enough construction season between October sixteenth and December thirty-first to construct the bridge? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think that is the concern about the timing. Because we would not award the contract until we have the full amount of funds.
Can we fund it? Well, I guess I'm wondering, can we fund it from our budget and apply for CPC funds and, and basically reimburse ourselves or we can't do that?
CPA can't replenish expenses, so.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, they can't, okay.
I, I don't think we're going to resolve everything tonight. It would be interesting to know if the rules would let you expend enough to be able to make a claim against the grant after October sixteenth, if you know what I mean. Because it's, there is a fair amount of time, I understand, as a construction season, but.
We can't even sign the contract though to expend any of the funds until we have the full sixty-five thousand in the pot. That's the issue.
Yeah, I guess what I'm wondering though is if, if the, if, if it's typically, it's like a phase, I mean, I don't know exactly how this works in a municipal setting, but if it were phased, you may have actually been able to call down part of that money, enough of the money to use the grant for it by the end of the year, even if the whole project isn't completed. I don't know how the, if the rules let you do that, but it's worth looking into. The general idea is we should try to do it the way it's supposed to work. I understand your point, but, you know, we should make every good faith try to use the apparatus we have and only if we absolutely are certain we can't, I think, would it be appropriate to use our, our funding for this. So I, I guess we're asking you to, I'm asking you to just double check and, and see if there's any way you could make that timeline work.
Okay. Yeah, I can certainly check with Jesse and Dan and see what.
John?
Does, does a grant require you to expend the money by the end of the year or could you, is it obligated? You know, you have to have all, we have to have all the money in the pot, so it'd be obligated and then we have it and we have to expend it before the end of the year? I just wanted to make, difference between obligation and.
I would defer to.
We'll double check on everything, so we'll come back to you.
That could be a key, because obligation, we can take care of that.
We'll call the state and, and double check.
Yeah.
Any other questions on this one?
Yeah, my, my recollection was when we used Mass Trails to do the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, and Steve, I don't, the Greenwood Road intersection, didn't we use Mass Trails to fund that? And I thought we ended up, you just had to do ten percent of the allocation of the grant. You didn't have to come up with that much money.
I, I don't remember the specifics of that grant. There wasn't matching component to it. I'm, I'm not sure what percentage it was, but it, and I don't recollect where the additional funding came from at the time. I think we had used maybe mitigation funds from somewhere else.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we are, I think we're at number twenty-two and we've got a couple of friends here from the EDC.
We have Alex McCusso speak.
That's great, just, just because you're new to presenting, could you introduce yourself?
Sure. Pardon my remarks, sir.
Okay, good.
So I'm Alex McCusso, I'm here on behalf of the town's Economic Development Committee. My fellow committee members and I are here to propose the use of roughly ninety-five thousand dollars in ARPA funding to onboard a part-time consultant that will serve as the primary point of contact for all of Westford's economic development efforts. The town's Economic Development Committee is currently all volunteer and is an advisory board, not an executive board. Given that, our hope is that this position will serve as an individual equipped to advise, assist, and act on behalf of the town's current and prospective businesses in their efforts to prosper here in Westford. This position will look to liaise with local businesses on both the permitting process and availability of grant funds, work with community leaders to determine and proactively meet their needs, to create and implement an economic development plan as well. Most importantly, we see this position's primary objective as being that single integral point of contact between the Westford business owner and town government with the Western Police Department as they seek to deploy their community policing initiatives, with the Chauva Tech as they look to place their skilled graduates here in town and elsewhere as well, and even improving businesses' reputation with groups like NEMCOG. This position will also help and identify and efficiently direct grant funding to small businesses, help those small businesses communicate more effectively with the town, and also clarify the existence of groups such as Mass Hire to help rectify issues such as staffing disorders facing a number of small, a number of firms these days. This is admittedly a long list of goals and objectives, but ultimately, Westford needs to do two things here. Number one, improve the speed and relevance with which the town is communicating on all fronts with its businesses. And number two, grow its tax base while also adjusting the distribution profile of that tax base such that it's more favorable and sustainable for the long term. So I mentioned the growth of the tax base, it's critical. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, the town's commercial and industrial tax base fell by nearly eight percent. And the distribution of that tax revenue is now split eighty-eight to twelve residential, residential to commercial as of the end of twenty-two. Other municipalities generally target an eighty to twenty to split on that front. Recently, Atkins split floated as high as ninety to ten, at which point they took steps to aggressively rectify that issue. There's also risk in overreliance on residential development to grow the tax base as our quantity of developable land here in town is finite and every additional dwelling here in town comes with a population increase and a commensurate draw on the town's resources. As the population grows, of course, additional revenue will be required to continue funding the town's growing budgetary needs. And that revenue growth will only be facilitated if we redouble our existing economic development efforts. And to that point, Westford is the only member of the Middlesex Three Coalition, and for those unfamiliar, that's a group of eleven surrounding municipalities. It's the only member group, you know, of those eleven surrounding municipalities that does not have a permanent economic development position on staff, the only one. Westford's commercial properties also have the highest vacancy rate at twelve percent among those eleven coalition member communities with only Billerica and Bedford coming in above ten percent. There's also concern that this rate could rise as in-place leases expire and firms adjust their physical footprints to respond to recent changes in working trends. In my view, it's pretty clear that Westford could be doing more to both grow its existing businesses and to attract new businesses here into town. So I've got a little personal experience on this front as well. At my prior firm, I led the project to bring a new Thermo Fisher by manufacturing plant into Chelmsford. My old firm acquired two twenty mill road, began converting that obsolete office building to a state-of-the-art manufacturing plant, identified Thermo as the end user, and ultimately ended up selling the project to them. Thermo has stated that project created over two hundred jobs at the plant and the building pays, now pays just over two hundred thousand dollars in annual real estate taxes to the town of Chelmsford. None of this would have been possible without the guidance and collaboration of Evan Bolansky, who was Chelmsford's Community Development Director. He assisted our team throughout the design and permitting process and was our primary point of contact in the project's early stages. And for firms like mine, we've got to know that municipalities in which we do business are welcoming of our investment and are going to be in our corner as we seek to drive growth in their cities and towns. And right now, all of Westford's competing municipalities have an individual or staffs that serve this purpose and Westford does not. I hope this illustrated the EDC's position and supported the need for an economic development consultant and how utilizing ARPA funds to bring this position aboard for the next two years will mark a positive first step to both, to both reinforcing and growing business here in the town. And with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Alex. Scott?
So I guess I'm confused. Is this person an advocate for current businesses or is this an individual to be, if you will, a magnet to attract new business? I mean, if I look at Route One Ten, there was a day when we were the cutting edge with all the new stuff being built. And now I look at Littleton Points, I look at the redevelopment for the IBM building, they're going to leapfrog us. So how do we, is this person going to give us ideas to how to do that or is this person really just, you know, we have to look at the wrong mix of properties on One Ten now? How do we fix that? Is this a consultant to tell us that or is this a consultant to say, I'm the owner of this business and please help, I don't like it, what the role is here?
The short answer is both. Right now, I think we could be doing more to bring in existing firms. Like I said, the, the vacancy rate here in town with commercial properties is twelve percent, it's higher than any of the other communities here in town, in the surrounding communities, rather. There's a lot more that we could be doing and right now, we don't have a single point of contact and it's, you know, Cheryl and I can certainly attest, we don't have a lot of power to attract those businesses right now. We are an advisory board and not an executive board. I think we're, we're fond in saying that right now, we trade in goodwill and I think we could do with somebody that has a sort of executive power to not only act on behalf of those businesses, but also have worked with the town proactively, as an example, with Jeff Morissette's office, to say streamline the permitting process. There's, I think, substantial risk at the tech park over behind Chili's where, you know, if you've got leases expiring there in the next two to four years or so, as those leases expire, you, it stands to reason that you're maybe not going to have quite as large of an office footprint there for companies that are there and, you know, that leads to a commensurate drop in tax revenue over time as those properties get revalued. Right now, there's no central point of contact, sort of guiding, working with NEMCOG, working with Middlesex Three, working with companies out there to say, here's what Westford is doing for business to attract, you know, companies like mine that are bringing investment to the town, but also to bring businesses here and say, here's why you should be coming to Westford. So we've had conversations with Mac Technologies, they would like to expand here in town, but what they're finding is they don't know who to call to help facilitate that conversation. You know, they can call, you know, Cheryl Ride, they can call Jeff Morissette, they can call Henry Fontaine, but to really get that conversation going and say, you know, how could we, you know, is there anything we can do to, you know, build more manufacturing space to try to mitigate traffic issues down a minus corner? They don't know who their primary point of contact is. The other eleven cities and towns around us, they all have primary points of contact, but we don't. And that's something that's, it's pretty low-hanging fruit that could bring us up to the standard of our local competing municipalities to really just help grow the tax base and keep the town competitive with local cities and towns.
One follow-up, so we discussed the need for a new master plan because we're kind of overdue for one. Within this person's bandwidth and scope, could they be, you know, advisor to that master plan, you know, committee to advise perhaps?
I think they could be, sure, yeah.
I just have a clarifying question. So is the ninety-five thousand dollars you're requesting for two, over the two years?
For two years, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to be sure that we weren't talking about ninety-five thousand dollars in ninety-five, so it's, okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, I had a similar question to Scott. I think there's a lot we just don't know about the business community, which don't have an information. And if we're looking at sort of our strategy for the next ten years, to do that with a big blind spot to a big important part of our community and tax base is probably reckless. So, any other questions on this? Yep, Chris?
So where'd the, where'd the ninety-five thousand come up? I mean, forty-five thousand for a consultant per year doesn't seem like a ton of money for somebody who, from what I'm gathering from your presentation, would need to have quite a bit of skills to really make an impact.
Yeah, so it's.
I, Joan can speak for that.
I did surveys of.
Joan, I'm sorry, could you get to the microphone just so they can hear you at home?
Joan Bennett, former chair of the EDC. I did a survey of what economic development staff in the area were earning and it's anywhere from eighty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. So with that, we came up with the ninety-five over two years and it would be a part-time person because we don't think we, we could get everything we want. Would love to have a full-time person for two years, but we're trying to be reasonable in our request. Did I answer it?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
The intent here is that this position is, as Joan said, a, a part-time position, also is a proof of concept. As, as Andrea said, this person will come on for, you know, hopefully come on for, for ninety-five thousand dollars for two years, at which point we can, you know, see what works, see what didn't, and, you know, potentially assess needs going forward. But again, it is a temporary possession for two years to get them onboard and get us moving in the right direction.
I'm sorry, Paul. So who would they report to?
That's, that's something I don't think we've considered.
That would be up to the town manager.
Yeah, I think that it would be a discussion of would they report to my office or would they report to the land use department? And I think we, we need to flush that out. I think the conversation has been, is it an employee of the town of Westford, which I have not been a proponent of because we don't. I have not been a proponent of because we don't want to be using ARPA funds for that? It would be consulting services, which I think you'd actually get more out of because it could be a firm with various people with various specialties to help in all of these areas that they're working on. So I think we have some things to massage and to work through in terms of gathering a scope of services if the board does grant these funds moving forward.
I mean, the one challenge I see is with the consultant and somebody who's part-time is building those relationships, right, and both with the internal staff that they need to know who to go to to figure out what to help shepherd a prospective business through the process. I think this is a super important position, and I wish we had one. So I think this is, if this is the best we can do, you know, I'm fully in support of it, but I'd love to see this as a full-time position so that we are on level footing with the rest of the communities that are surrounding us.
We start small, then we build.
Great. Any other questions? Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Thanks, EDC. The next two, I think we are postponing. Is that the right way to describe it? Okay, and then we're up to you, Kristen, for master plan.
Sure, great. So I prepared a memo for you dated May fourth that has some additional information on my request from last month regarding the website redesign, which I got great feedback from. I appreciate that. The next three items...
Actually, before we leave the web design, I know that the, we're sort of tabling the web design for sustainability, but if there's some way we include that in what you're doing so it becomes part of the whole web design.
Yes, we can definitely have conversations with Climate Action, excuse me, with CEASC related to what their needs are. I think related to a website redesign, if they're bringing on vendors that are not Town of Westford, that's probably not the best idea for our town upgrade, but I will definitely have those conversations with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So the other three requests that I have before you this evening are the townwide strategic plan, a comprehensive land use master plan update, and a facilities master plan. And I've had a lot of conversations with staff and some board members individually and other members of the public of, okay, you're proposing three different plans. How do they all work together? How do they dovetail? And I really am just looking for some feedback of where the board wants to go, and perhaps you request, you ask for funding for all three, or perhaps we do one, or perhaps we do two. So I'd love to have some feedback and conversation, and again, it doesn't all have to be this evening. When I was with the Town of Shrewsbury, we embarked on what's called a townwide strategic plan, and that is really a view of the entire municipality. So you survey residents, you survey staff, department heads, boards, and commission members. Really, what are the most important things to the Town of Westford? It could be sustainability, it could be providing exceptional customer service to our residents and business owners, it could be community development, it could be, you know, interface with how the residents interface with the town. So that's really a high-level plan of where do we see ourselves going in the next ten years. It is not specifically land use. It can be certain other things. So that is kind of what I call the highest umbrella of planning for a municipality, a strategic plan for a town. And there's certain ways to go about that. So there's a request there for ninety, ninety thousand dollars to do that. There's other, two other levels of plans that I'd like to discuss this evening as well. The comprehensive land use master plan, which your board has been talking about for a long time. The last comprehensive land use master plan was completed in two thousand nine. That is always led by the planning board because under Mass statute, the planning board has ownership of the land use master plan. And your two thousand nine plan actually incorporated some things that are not always traditional in a land use master plan. They did look at facilities in a sense. They looked at climate, they looked at sustainability, and then they looked at land use such as transportation, housing, economic development, and other matters. And we do have Jeff Morissette and Joe from the planning department. They have surveyed other municipalities who have done a comprehensive land use master plan in the past few years, and we're looking at about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that update. That would dovetail under a townwide strategic plan if we were to go that route. Also, I'd be looking for a facilities master plan. With Fifty-One Main Street not moving forward at town meeting or at the ballot, with the school department doing a facilities master plan on their side, and seeing that the town is growing and there are needs in a lot of our buildings, this plan would look at a series of eight to ten town buildings, would look at a series of our departments and how we use our departments and how we see them used in the future. This would assess not only our capital needs, but also kind of our space needs of how we see ourselves today and then how we see ourselves in the future. And I've been working with Jeff Goodwin, our facilities director, related to that, and we see a need for approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that plan. Separate from that, the town has done a lot of work with the Cameron Senior Center and the HVAC project over there, and we know that that was pulled for the town meeting because there were no quotes received. Before they move forward with that HVAC replacement project, included in the hundred and fifty thousand, they'd be looking at a six thousand dollar appropriation to it due to a space needs assessment, because there might be some areas where the senior center is holding programming or specific facilities that is not specific to where it should actually go. So an architect would look at that and say, "Well, maybe the library is in this location today, but it'd be better served in this location, and a different program would be in that location." So the COA board actually has reviewed that and would like to move forward and, under that umbrella, ask for six thousand dollars for their space needs assessment. So this is a lot. I know I'm throwing a lot at you this evening. Tried to prepare you as much as possible with a memo last week, but happy to take this chunk by chunk however is best for you to all digest.
Scott?
So first thing, I happened to sit down with Jennifer and council agent and go tour of the Cameron, and, for example, we used to have a podiatrist come by. Now they don't. Why? Because it's not a spot for them. I gotta believe we could find a spot for them. So I think that's something that gets into the logic of what is scheduled, when and where. That staff spends a lot of time moving things around because as programs come and go, you set up and take down. Is a way to make that work less, you know, of a shuffle if we, so if we discuss things smarter. So I'm in favor of doing something with Cameron that's short-term, even with the AC units, which we're talking about getting some portable AC units, they're going to follow the people around. So to minimize movement of all that stuff or perhaps minimize purchases of them, it makes sense to do something. On the strategic plan, is it possible, I presume that it's a public document from Shrewsbury, right? I can picture master plans and facilities plans. I can't quite picture what that looks like, so if you could share that, that would be...
There's an entire website that I'll share with the board, absolutely.
And on facilities, this one, you know, looking at the, you know, the need to renovate or do something about Station Four in NAB, you look at Old NAB, sitting there and say, "Is that the highest and best use of that structure"? Only four classrooms in that building, you know, and I guess it's a community kind of building, but whatever we do, I thought, let's look at that one too and say, clearly, it's not energy efficient, it's not historic, it's, you know, what can we do to make that a better, maybe a use for the town with the structure that's sitting there?
So just following up on Scott's comments, I think the facilities master plan makes an incredibly lot of good sense, and I think we really need to do it. I mean, we've got, we spend money for design, we appropriate money for, you know, design for this building and for that building and for this building, and at this point, having all of these separate, you know, separate designs and separate, you know, studies, I think is an inefficient and both from a time management and a cost perspective of doing that. I think we really need to stop and take stock of ourselves as a town and as a community and figure out, you know, what buildings do we have? What are they doing? Are they being used most efficiently? Can some buildings be renovated? Do some buildings, you know, need, can we put, before we could build another building, can we put various departments in places? So I actually, at this point, think of these three that, and, I mean, all of them obviously have merit and are worthwhile, but I think that we really need a facilities study to help us understand, you know, sort of what our town's infrastructure is going to look like going forward. I mean, we're talking about, you know, a new fire station in NAB and, you know, what are we going to do with Fifty-One Main Street now that, you know, it's failed at the ballot and at town meeting? So I think we can't make those decisions in a vacuum without taking all of our buildings into consideration. So I think that's really important. I think we need to do a new, I mean, it's two thousand and nine since we did our last master plan. That's twelve years ago? Somebody can do the math for me. Fourteen years ago, you know, and, you know, I think, you know, we, as a community, we took pride in the fact that we were one of the first communities in Massachusetts actually to have a master plan back in the mid nineteen nineties, and we led, you know, sort of the Commonwealth in preparing that master plan. So I think we have fallen behind again, and it's something that we should look at. And I agree with Scott. I don't have a clear sense of what a strategic townwide plan means or looks like, so I can't really comment on that yet because I don't, I'm not sure I understand it.
So on the facilities plan, I'm super in favor of this, you know, I know...
Oh, and I forgot about the recreation study that we did.
Well, there's that, but, you know, I can remember, you know, going off of the whole recreation thing, you know, being in Old Town Farm Road and seeing, you know, the write-up of the condition of that building and how bad it was from the last time we had sort of a quasi-facilities plan. So this does get into the nitty-gritty of the conditions of these facilities as well as not just how they're being used?
Correct. It gets into the conditions and the capital needs over time as well.
Okay, and so to Scott's point, why are we, I can see why we're leaving the schools out of this conversation, but why aren't we looking at the whole of Roden Bush, for example? Why aren't we looking at some of the other town buildings? Why would we exclude them?
So right now on the list, I have Town Hall, Fifty-Five Main Street, Fifty-Three Main Street, the Police Department, Fifty-One Main Street, the Center Fire Station, One East Scott Street Technology Department, Twenty Pleasant Street Cameron Senior Center, Thirty Beacon Street Facilities Garage, Twenty Eight North Street Highway Building, and then various leased buildings, which could be Roden Bush or Old NAB or Frost. So we do lease those buildings out to other uses right now.
Right. You have specific here, just third floor for Roden Bush, though. I just wanted to know if there was a reason for that.
So that's where the Recreation Department is located.
I understand, but I'd like the whole building to be looked at, number one, from a conditions perspective. We just renovated, so it should be fine, but it makes sense to give it a good overall.
I wanted to get the board's take on that, so I left it a little bit open.
And I think, you know, while it is being used for somebody else right now, we need to assess. We need to get information. Could it be used more effectively? I don't know. You know, I think what we do there is great. I'm not saying we want to kick Roden Bush Community Center out, but I think we need to include it as part of the analysis. Can't hurt to get some information. Is Frost over here? Is that town too?
Frost is leased out too.
Yeah, so it's, you definitely keep all those as part of the assessment.
Yeah, and also I think I'd encourage us not to think of, like, leaving the schools out of it. I think we can take advantage of the facility study. The schools are just done.
Absolutely.
And there could be some opportunities that emerge out of that that we haven't really thought of yet.
Yes, but I think we don't need to have them go and do an in-depth assessment of every school to determine what the condition of the school is.
I completely agree. I just wanted to highlight the opportunity here now that they're concluding their work.
Right, we should use their study to inform us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, other questions? I guess it sounds like we'll be, it sounds like you've got some feedback. It sounds like we all would like to be a little bit better educated on what a strategic plan looks like as we're considering this. Go ahead, Scott.
Also, with this, so you were learning with the library and, you know, with Fifty-One Main, which, you know, if we move forward with those renovations, there's new regulations on requirements for energy efficiency, and so this would also, I think, tell us, I presume, maybe that some buildings become almost unfixable because of the cost to be fixed to do that. So there would be a, I guess, assessment of conservation energy usage?
Yes.
Okay, other things on this. Why don't we move to thirty-one?
Can I just ask one clarifying question on the facilities? So the Cameron has asked, and the COA board has asked that that six thousand dollars be taken out kind of as a pot to move forward with their space assessment so that they can then move forward with the HVAC project. I understand that you might not be ready to vote on items tonight, but just wanted to get your take on parsing that out to begin with so they can get started on that.
My take is that that would be fine, and we could, if the timeline says we should talk about it tonight, then we should talk about it tonight. I don't know, are they on that tight a timeline?
I mean, the sooner we can do it for them, the better, if then we can come back to the October town meeting for the HVAC project.
I think for six thousand dollars, if it helps keep them on timeline, it's worth addressing.
Yeah, and for, I mean, reality is, we're not going to, the timeframe to, the way thing about Cameron is years, not months, so, yeah, I think the quick fix is necessary because a lot, the other fix is a much longer-term project.
Okay. Any other discussion on basically accelerating and treating sort of emergency status for six thousand dollars just for the use, facility use study for Cameron? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to do that?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, okay, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
As I was talking to Jennifer, there's a discussion, if we don't fix all the HVAC, given the timeframe it takes to do that, they might want to buy some temporary, you know, portable ones, which means the fewer you buy, the better, and six thousand dollars may only buy two units.
So the six thousand dollars is for, just for the study, the space study? Jeff Goodwin is taking care of the portable units.
I understand that, but this might actually tell us how better to allocate them.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay. Number thirty-one. Patty? Hi, Patty.
Hello.
Well, I know you've been listening to lots of things, so I'll keep it brief. You've, I've given you all the material. I am requesting pole pads, which are basically iPads that you would use to check in. I've been working a little bit with our moderator, Angela Harkness, and actually, we should have brought this to the access to town meeting, but Angela and I talked about it. And basically, it would move, speed things along as far as checking in, particularly at town meeting. It is basically the voting list on iPads. I am told by the company and every other town clerk in this Commonwealth, which seems to be, they all have them but us, that it is the way to go, that our poll workers who are usually retired are, go into it fearfully and then love it. I would go into it fearfully. I'm hopeful that I will love it, but I, I actually think this is the wave of the future. I actually, the future is now. When Kristen and I first met, one of the first questions she asked me was, "Do you have pole pads?" I said, "Uh, no." So I know Angela is also out here. If she has something she wants to add to it, I had a whole little thing prepared, but you know what? Dan's little synopsis right here is perfect. It basically, it's not necessarily saving us money because we do have to make the initial investment, but it will save us a lot of time. And next year is the presidential election year. I can't tell you how many public records requests I still get from the 2020 election, and this system, which is a closed system, by the way, it's not internet-based, gives me the ability to basically very quickly produce all these reams of information that people seem to find very valuable about our town's election. So I'm hoping you'll consider it. What did I miss? Anything? Angela, if you're out there, chime in.
Dan, what did I tell you?
I tell you, Dan, your synopsis is perfect, so.
Let me cover it up.
Okay.
Questions for Patty?
Okay.
Patty, I guess I had a question that you maybe already answered it, but if we use the pole pads, does that reduce at all the need for the number of workers that you have? Is there any savings associated with that?
Actually, it will, particularly at town meeting, not at the, not on Election Day because you would use the pole pads, two pole pads instead of the books when you check in. That wouldn't, but it's a time saver. You get them in, you get them out, you know? That's what we want to do. We have changed in the, our way of voting and town meeting in the last few years by changing locations, and we're just trying to make things a lot more streamlined and efficient, and this is the next step in that process.
Thanks. Questions for Patty?
No, I think this makes absolute sense. I think it's time we moved into the twenty-first century.
Wow.
I was going to say that.
That'd be good, that'd be good. Okay.
Wait a minute, somebody has their hand up.
Oh.
Angela.
Angela has her hand up.
Angela, we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, so can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Just wanted to add...
Okay, great. Just wanted to add my support to this. It'll continue to make town meeting more efficient and more effective, and I'm certain our competent poll workers are gonna be able to slide into it very easily. And it'll just make things better for the voters, which is always our goal. So just wanted to add my support and behind it.
I, I have a question, though, in terms of funding. So if we decided to do this, is there a lead time for ordering these so that you could have them in time for a town meeting in October?
They told me to plan on ten weeks, which is why I have it here. I would like to try it out. I will make the other round comment here, that town meeting and how we are lined up and if people are lined up by alphabet, don't need to do that and go to anybody, because they're just gonna put your name in.
So ten weeks, what, what's your drop date for this decision, I guess, is the question?
Well, let's see, ten weeks.
Beginning of August, that would be?
Yeah.
Get them, so lead time.
We need training.
And you need training time.
This, this price includes training, which is not extensive, I'm told, but it's still some training to it. And they come the first town meeting as well.
Oh, nice.
So maybe end of July or something like that gives you some, gives you some room, and I think we'll be well through this process by then. So I thi- I think we're okay to, to treat it in the existing non-emergency category.
But just as a, as a small, small, probably a small budget, but, but item, but you have to pay the poll workers while they get trained? And is that in the cost?
Uh, no. You, if you want to start off with a couple of them, we try a town meeting, we can do that, but I thought perhaps this was a good opportunity to get them all going.
No, but secondly, from a budgeting standpoint, if we're gonna have, how many, how many poll workers are there? There's quite a few, right?
Well, we have seven, seven precincts. You'd have two at each, so I would need fourteen pole pads. Those pole pads would also be used at town meeting. We wouldn't use as many, but they would, we would own them. They'd be ours. And they would be, what am I missing? I'm sorry.
Scott wants to know if you have to pay the poll, pay the, the, the folks for their, for the time they spend training, right?
Oh, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I'm sorry. No, that all comes in this price.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I hate presentations. I'm a little nervous.
You're doing, you're doing great, Patty.
Great, Patty.
As long as we didn't approve something, that's how they can afford to.
Especially because it's technology. Mike Wells is out there laughing his head off somewhere, because he gives me a hard time every day.
He's, he's up next, so what comes around goes around, Mike.
I actually talked to him too, and he said this was a very workable system, and that he thought it could be made, implemented fine within our structures and the academy and Stony Brook, so.
Good, okay. Any other questions for Patty before we go to number thirty-two? Mike Wells. Multi-factor authentication. Hey, Mike.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep, sound great.
Hello, Mike.
So multi-factor authentication, everyone's favorite project. Nobody, nobody wants it, but we have to do it sadly. This is a, a second token to authenticate users from, for our major systems, in addition to username and password. And it's designed to protect us essentially from passwords being stolen. Even if your password is stolen, a new user can't gain access to our systems without providing this secondary token, be it a PIN number that's sent to your phone, a number generated on your, on a app on your phone, or a token that you have, or something like that, an email message that gets sent to a different address. We had a scare around the beginning of the year when it looked as if our insurance company were not gonna renew our cyber insurance unless we adopted this. It appears they backed off that a little this year. But we have already come under pressure, for example, when the schools put Power School in, one of their pre, one of Power Schools' questions to us was, do you have multi-factor authentication for the school users? Because they don't want people accessing their sys, their systems without multi-factor authentication. So we really can't put this off any longer. The money I'm asking for is partly to fund an outside agency, a company, to come in and help us figure out how we're gonna do this in all our different applications. We have many different kinds of applications, logons for emails, logons for units, logins for Google in the schools. We have Clever, all these different things that we have to figure out how we can implement this on. And then there is gonna be an impact on the annual budget, probably of the order of twenty thousand a year, additional cost or something between the town and the schools, and then some initial setup costs as well, which is how I've come up with that estimate. I don't have hard numbers for this right now, but hopefully we should have them very soon.
Thanks, Mike. I think all of us are unfortunately very aware of the need to move to multi-factor. Questions for Mike? Chris?
Mike, I'm sorry, is this just for an analysis, not actually any implementation at this point?
No, so ha- about half of that money will go to a company probably, who will tell us how we're gonna do it and help us do it. So there are lots of different products out there, which have different capabilities. The one that a lot of people use is a thing called Duo, but it has a couple of very key deficiencies that are problematic for us. So we may look at a different monocoque or something, but it's a very complicated thing, and you need to be familiar with all the capabilities of the products to make good decisions, and we just aren't at this point.
I think the question, though, is, does this get you all the way to having a system, or does this just get you the analysis?
No, it will get us to having systems that we can turn on.
Sorry, second question for you, Mike. Is this gonna als- you mentioned schools. Are we talking all school employees, and what about students who are also accessing the town networks and resources?
Well, thank goodness, the clarification we got from the insurance company is that students are not included. But it's essentially every employee except contractors. So students don't have to do it. That would just be a nightmare. We'd never get a class started. It's logged in. But it is gonna be every employee. It won't be quite as arduous as you might imagine, because, I mean, those of us that use multi-factor systems, they're usually set up in such a way that they don't require it every time. If you reconnect the next day from the same browser on the same computer, it knows it's you again, and it just lets you in with the password. But again, that's down, mostly it's down to configuration. We can set it up, we need to be able to set it up so that it doesn't, you can log into a workstation in our network without providing a second factor, but if you take that same workstation and use it in a hotel or something, then we're gonna want two factors.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Mike? Okay, thanks, Mike. So now on to the process by which we're gonna make all these important and, and challenging choices about how to allocate. I've, I talked a little bit with, with Kristin and, with Dan, so it, it doesn't seem like, and I don't think anyone's proposing, that we just start at the top and, and vote yes or no. I don't think that's gonna get the optimal best solution. And so I have a proposal. The proposal is that we go back to the requesters, and for requesters that have requested a whole bunch of things, we ask them to give us a sense of their priorities within what they've requested. That's one thing we would ask. The second thing is, in some cases, the decision we would have is not fund, fund, but there may be an option where people could get a lot of good and, and accomplish a lot with, say, half of what they've requested. They could limit the scope of the project. They could scale it down in some way. So that's another question I think we'd like to ask the requesters. Is there a viable option you'd like us to consider at, at half your request, or some fraction of your request? So we have that on board when we're trying to create this optimal spread. Another thing for us to decide is if we think that the firefighter overtime funding, which is a significant amount, it's, yeah, five hundred and some thousand. If we consider that money already spent, so that's not really a budgeting decision we can make, then what we'd be deciding is roughly one point seven million of asks against roughly one point two million of funds. That would be the sort of framework we'd be operating under. So my question for you is, and then we would come back once we have this input. I would suggest that, that Kristin and Dan, and maybe a small group of us, make sort of a, a way to look at this, sort of a dashboard that can help us get to something that's sort of a collective recommendation, rather than doing everything piecemeal, because I think that's gonna not get us to the best place. So I'm interested in your feedback around, around that idea, saying, sending these questions back to the requesters, considering the firefighter, firefighter overtime money, money spent, so not really up for consideration, and the idea of having a, a smaller subgroup sort of work this into a form that we can all come back to it and, and try to make a decision with the whole in mind. Scott?
Sure, what the heck, I'll start. So yes, I think it makes a lot of sense to have every user prioritize their requests, because I'd like to make everybody somewhat happy, but we can't make everybody all happy. So how we can, you know, sort that would be useful, would be useful to know. Yeah, second, if you think about, okay, what is ARPA, you know, forget the fact of, of what we want to have. ARPA was meant to be two things. One was funding to get you through COVID expenses, and secondly, funding to get you through the budget problems caused by, by COVID. And so under both counts, the fire budget makes sense, because we already spent it. If we don't fund it from COVID, we, from ARPA, we're funding it from the budget someplace else. So I think it makes sense. We've, we've got to figure that, let's even take that out as spent money, and we're working off the, the one-two. You know, for myself, I kind of just want to see, you know, some final numbers in a spreadsheet, and I would, you know, play with it myself and say, okay, in my mind, how would I assign rankings of one through N? And then maybe we, we all sort of compare our one through N's, and it may be that a whole bunch of ones and a whole bunch of N's, and the debate is only about four items, and I, you know, that.
That's a, that's a great idea, and, and I like that a lot. So basically, create this sort of dashboard, condensed everything in one place, and then send it out and ask people to spend three or four days with it, and then send back in. We can kind of collate and look at where people are. I think that's your suggestion.
If that means a meeting law, but that's.
Well, if you all do it on your own, and you all just send it back to Dan and I, and then we can issue it the day of the meeting.
Yep. Yep, other, other thoughts to this?
I don't like that idea. I, I, I mean, I like the dash, I'm sorry, I like the dashboard idea, and, you know, us, you know, going one through M or whatever. But I really benefit from hearing discussion and from, like, if I make something like N and you make it B, I want to know why you make it B, and I'm sitting here ready to be convinced that, gee, maybe I didn't give it enough consideration. But I would never know that if we don't have that discussion. So I actually would want to have a discussion about that.
Live and in person.
And live and in person, rather than just submit it to Kristin and then have it brought back to us as, you know.
I wasn't saying fait accompli. I'm saying that's, that's your straw man, which you then discussed, but.
I, I know, but I, I guess I would still, I like the, I like the interactive process.
Okay, I hear that. So an alternative could be that we, again, send out, get this information from the requesters, put this dashboard together, and then I think I would propose we try to schedule a separate meeting where we're just talking about that. Because I think it'll take six hours. I mean, it's gonna take some amount of time. We wouldn't do, we wouldn't do it all at once, but it'll, it'll take a significant amount of time for us to, to boil this down to a good solution. So I guess if we're trending towards that, we put these requests out, and then come back to you with kind of a worksheet and a, and a request for some scheduled times we could get together and go through it. John?
I think timing has to be in there too, just the urgency, timing, can it be put off? Also, we gotta be cognizant of the fact that we have to obligate this by the end of two, two thousand and twenty-four. We have to obligate the money.
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay.
It's like eighteen months from now.
Well, yeah, well.
I mean, I'm not saying that this should be a long process.
Yeah, but some of them are multi-year, and some of them may fall into that.
Right, I'm, I'm just, I, I don't, I, I agree with you, Tom. I think it should be a separate meeting that we discuss this. I, I'm not seeing this as like a long, drawn-out process for months, honestly. I'm sort of seeing this as, we go back and do what you said and ask people to prioritize, and also ask people to say, hey, do you really need this? Can you, you know, trim around the edges, kind of thing? Come back, let's get that information and then put it together, and then have a meeting and discuss it. And I see that happening this summer.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking we try to do this over the next six weeks, say, and to, to a final, final position?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you're right.
That's summer, Tom.
The, the other thing I would ask people to think about is, on my mind, I'm, I'm seeing two buckets forming from a lot of what's left. Part are things that would be addressed normally in a capital planning cycle, but they're asking for it now. Why not ask? But probably more appropriately, if it's not COVID-related, it, it kind of belongs in the capital cycle with a kind of oversight and structure that the capital committee gives it. I think if it comes to us piecemeal as a big bag of stuff, it all looks good to us, but that's not the way we do it. We have a way we do it. So i- if I was gonna have a little bit of a bias going into it, I would probably segment off things that sort of belong in the capital process, and then look at some of these strategic opportunity things where, where we have this money, we can get some inside stuff that's planned for the next ten years. It can really form a bedrock for everything the town's doing. I, I kind of feel, I'm at least more drawn to those, because I see this as sort of a one-time opportunity to get ahead of some things that really need some attention, and I kind of feel like the, the, the capital things probably belong in the process we've designed for capital, but I don't, everyone, there's no precondition there. I just want to get your reaction to it and see if you wanted to incorporate that.
Well, infrastructure is a big part of what they're talking about in the ARPA funding. Infrastructure is a big thing. So I don't know, and we still need to consider that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not committing proposal rule. I'm just, if I had to, it's sorting in my mind that way. Chris?
So Tom, you've mentioned a dashboard. Can you flesh that out for me a little bit more? How different is that gonna be from what we're already?
It would be a live spreadsheet. It would include probably dropdown, you know, A, B, C options for people that give us the feedback that they requested a hundred, but there's a meaningful project that they could be delighted with, with fifty. So it would give you the ability to, you know, either not fund, fund, or fund at some partial level that, that they've given us guidance of. And then you'd have their priorities, you know, alongside, and so you could see, you'd be able to sort it and get all of theirs in one place, which isn't the way it is now. You could look at what they've given us in terms of guidance for priorities and use that in your selection. So it's basically a spreadsheet with a bunch of stuff populated, and you can work.
That's what I was thinking you were going towards. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna do something more significant, but that, that sounds good.
Okay, so if people are comfortable with that approach or have any other comments, I don't think we need to vote on that. I think we, we would just take the direction you've given.
Sure.
Okay, any, any last on this before we move to the next topic?
So you're gonna ask for the prioritization, and then if they can trim a little bit off the request? And then is there a timing component that we're gonna ask for as well?
Yeah, we'll ask them, you know, like Patty's is, you know.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
So we'll ask, and, and some of the other things. So we'll ask, what is your timing consideration?
Is there a deadline associated with it?
Right, right.
Yeah, and, and I think we might give them a little bit of guidance on not like, hey, can you trim it? I think it might be, you know, is there, is there a program you can envision that would add a lot of value at fifty percent? We, we got a lot of, we've, we've got fifty percent more asked than money, and some of the stuff is probably stuff we're gonna have to do. So we're gonna need the ability to look at it and say, can this project get part of their goals achieved with half? Not like ten percent less. We're not gonna get there that way, I don't think. So we may give a little bit of guidance around, you know, what would it look like at half? Okay, great. We got a plan. Eight twenty-five item, old new business. Review Community One-Stop For Growth Applications Request and authorize the town manager to sign the grant applications. And Joe, are you gonna talk to us about those?
I'd like to keep it brief. Thank you all this evening for having us. So once again, the time period for the Community One-Stop For Growth. The process really starts back in February during the expressions of interest phase. During that phase, we really get invaluable feedback from EOHED, some of our grant application potentials, where they give us direct feedback on what program would make the most sense for the, the concept that you have for this grant application. So that way, we're able to tailor our full application to the requirements of that program. So we have two before you tonight. We're, we're looking for you to authorize the town manager to submit these applications by the June second deadline. One is for our infrastructure study in the Graniteville area. Obviously, there's been investments over there already with some of the cleanup activities on twelve North Main. We're looking to assess both the physical and the financial feasibility to connect twelve North Main and other nearby key properties to some off-site wastewater treatment, to really open up and see what the development potential could be in that area. And then the other request is for building out a business directory. So that would really help the town develop a framework to track existing businesses, existing vacant spaces in the town, and allow any prospective businesses to contact our office, the Economic Development Committee, or an Economic Development Coordinator, to really kind of help be matchmaker in a way of, we have prospective business, and we have this property owner's contact information for vacant space. So we can really help facilitate those conversations, and I really think it would be a signal to the business community. And I really think it would be a signal to the business community that Westford is approachable. We're, we're proactive in our response to the business community and their needs and we want them to be successful. So, those are the two grant applications. I don't know if there's any questions.
Good, thanks, Joe.
So, I know with the last one, I mean, the Economic Development Committee has been talking about trying to put that kind of directory together since the Economic Development Committee was established, what, ten years ago now? I don't even know how long ago that was, but from the very beginning, they have tried to do that and, you know, they've tried to do it with volunteers and, um, it's just really, really difficult. Um, and, um, you know, they've, they've made a really good stab at it, I think, but if we got grant money to do that, I think that would just be very helpful to the town and I think dovetails into what Alex was talking to, about, talking to us about earlier this evening. So, I'm, I'm fully supportive of that and I'm certainly fully supportive of, uh, the infrastructure study as, as well. Um, another area that we've been looking at for years and years and years and years.
I think it's, it sounds like a great proposal and very valuable. So, you need us to, to vote to authorize you?
Authorize myself to submit, yep. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Uh, request to approve National Public Works Week proclamation. Steve?
Love proclamations. Thank you very much. Uh, so each year, the American Public Works Association, uh, designates the third week in May as, uh, National Public Works Week. Uh, we participated in Public Works Week, uh, for a number of years. We, um, haven't done it the past few years because of the pandemic. But essentially, what it is, is recognizing the public works industry for its role that it has in, uh, the everyday lives of citizens. So, um, we're just looking for your endorsement in the proclamation so that we can participate. Uh, our plan is essentially to, you know, highlight the work that our staff does, um, you know, work on some internal training and some team building and, um, really to promote our department.
Well, we're so grateful for the work you do. If this helps you and helps promote recognition of your hard work, then it sounds like a great thing for us to do. Any, any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the National Public Works Week proclamation. All moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
unanimous. Thanks, Steve. Uh, discuss and set date for annual strategic planning retreat.
So, um, as you have done in the past, um, just having individual conversations with board members, um, I got the indication that September would be a good time to have your annual strategic plan retreat. So, we reached out to Kimball Farms to see, uh, when they might have availability and pricing of what that might be. So, uh, this, this afternoon, I sent out, um, kind of a list of dates that are not available at Kimball's. Thursday, September fourteenth, Friday, September fifteenth, Friday, September twenty-second. And then we also combined, um, dates that you'd have select board meetings, planning board meetings, zoning board, conservation, finance. We could certainly take into account other board and committee member meetings, but we felt that those were kind of the top ones. So, wanted to get a sense from the board this evening on several dates that we could shop for Kimball and for other, uh, outreach to communities. Uh, Kimball's has also stated that they would, um, honor the pricing from last year, um, which I think was like a little over eight thousand dollars, which I believe is baked into the budget already. So, uh, that's very valuable that they, they would honor that pricing as well. So, wanted to have that discussion starting tonight so we can start planning and then start thinking about ideas, uh, on how you want to set that up.
Um, Scott?
Actually, I just, I just occurred to me after the school committee left, um, because one of the, one of the traditional problems with fall is you get various school open houses. We want to avoid those dates too, but I, I should have thought of that before now.
Yep, and school committee meetings, sure. Yep, we can look at that.
Because like each, each, like the, the academy has one, the, the middle schools typically are the, are the big three.
They get open house that night.
Yep.
Almost always that first or so week after school opens or second week.
Sure.
Kristen, would you like to get that input and then propose to us your favorite date and alternate?
I can certainly do that and also wanted to get if any board members have conflicts or have thoughts on, on specific dates or days of the week that might be best or have traditionally been used.
Haven't we used Thursdays? I think we've usually used Thursday.
Try to find a Thursday, okay.
Fourteenth is Thursday.
Yeah, but that was a date they couldn't do.
They're not available on the fourteenth.
I thought that was available.
No, I read it wrong too, John.
I was ready to latch on to that.
We could try the, the Thursday following, um.
So was I. But maybe the tw- uh, maybe the twenty-first?
We could try the Thursday, the twenty-first. I'll just check with the schools to see if they don't have anything that you're going through.
That sounds great. So, do you want to come back with your proposal next time?
Or the seventh, I mean.
There's a good chance the school's the fourteenth anyway. We may get lucky with that one.
So, twenty-first or, or seventh.
Or the seventh.
Yeah.
And seventh is the Thursday of Labor Day week, so people will be back.
Yeah, people, people will be back.
Yep, yep.
I think it was the eighth last year, wasn't it? I don't remember, but I think it was right after an election.
I think you're right.
Okay. That's why I remember that.
Okay, Kristen, you good?
Um, yes, I am good. And then we will start shopping around, um, topics and, and your thoughts for setup and things like that.
Okay.
Guarantee sunshine, no rain.
Of course.
Yeah, that's right. Great appointment of Sriman Banerjee and Gabriella Miller to clean, uh, Energy and Sustainability Committee to fill two unexpired terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions about these candidates. For Mike, uh, we appreciate people's willingness to serve. Any questions?
Move to a point.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Thank you to Sriman and Gabriella. Review and discuss annual town meeting twenty twenty-three resolution for a planning study along the Route forty corridor. So, this is some, some guidance, obviously, that we got from town meeting. Uh, it sounds like this would be part of what we've been, uh, part of the, uh, the planning board-driven master plan review.
So, it could be, or it could be separate. And, uh, there are members of the, the land use department here as well. Um, so town meeting, we heard that there is a need for planning around, along the Route forty corridor. Um, if we were to go forward with a comprehensive land use master plan, I could see a section be carved out. Let's look at Route forty. Let's look at one-ten. Let's look at Graniteville. And that could be baked into the, the comprehensive land use master plan. Or the town could just decide, okay, we need to do Route forty right away. We're gonna do that. That would not be my recommendation. My recommendation would be to bake it into the comprehensive land use master plan under a specific section. But, um, you are all town meeting member, you know, you can all vote at town meeting. You heard the resolution, so I wanted to get a sense of the board and, and see how we wanted to.
Does the board feel that for now, while we're still entertaining the, the comprehensive master plan, that we can consider this a subset of that or do we want to come at it differently?
But I think Andrew quite correctly and eloquently said the fact we don't want to be doing a bunch of independent studies.
Yeah.
Um, so with that in mind, yeah, which we one, not two.
Yeah, I don't see the urgency in Route forty being a separate thing. I think it'd be part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I agree, but we do have the planning depart- I, I guess I just want to know Jeff, if he has any thoughts about it or any.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff, do you have a, do you have a hot take?
Yeah, and I'll just, I will advocate for Jeff and his team that they are really focused on the MBTA communities right now. That is their number one focus. So, I'm sure Jeff will reiterate that as well. So, but I'll let him speak.
Thank you for that. Just so that you know, uh, we do recognize this as an ongoing issue. There's been, you know, a lot of friction over a lot of years. There's a lot of challenges along Route forty. On the one hand, it does provide great access, but there's a lot of single-family dwellings. There's also some intermittent business areas and sometimes it's hard. It creates a lot of, of friction that you don't see in some other parts of town. And so, to us, we thought it made sense to study this in more detail, maybe look at some different uses that might be more in harmony, provide less friction, maybe create some new opportunities. We actually did apply, uh, Joe, was it twenty twenty-one, twenty-two? We did actually apply for some, uh, grants to do a corridor study along, uh, Route forty. However, it would not have been deemed competitive, uh, with all of the other, uh, say, MBTA communities and things that were state mandates. It obviously would have, would have lost out and we ourselves applied, uh, for MBTA communities instead of that. But we do recognize it as an ongoing problem. It is something that we think needs to be addressed. It's just balancing priorities, um, workload and funding. So, it's just one part of a large puzzle.
Are you generally in support of the idea of considering this as a, as an integrated part of this master plan discussion that we're having?
I think it can be. I just think we should be aware of that, uh, as we go about, uh, soliciting, um, any proposals for that. We want to make sure that if we're calling out specific corridor studies, that that's known upfront.
And also that that truly fits the overall priority, it sounds like you're saying. There, we, we could look at that and even agree that it's important, but when we look at all the other things, it may actually not be the top priority.
I'm not saying it's the top priority, but I, I think it is an important piece. You know, as you've heard earlier, um, we may have more housing opportunities, but we want to try to find ways to balance that. I think Route forty could be a way to do that, but want to do it in a way that fits in, um, with everyone along Route forty to the extent practical.
Okay, in the back of our minds, we'll, uh, so it could be that this master plan discussion ends up covering this and addressing it. If it, if things don't go that way when we're making our ARPA selection, we'll bring this back and, and discuss how we want to address it in that case. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Questions for Jeff? Chris?
Uh, just a thought. Should we update our spreadsheet specifically the description for the land use master plan to, to maybe call this out so we don't forget it somehow?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, it's, it was a town meeting resolution, so I think, could we do that, Kristen, just in parentheses or with an asterisk or something? Just remind ourselves that that includes the Route forty?
Thank you.
Super?
Thanks, Tim.
Sure. Review and discuss annual town meeting twenty twenty-three resolution for the Drew Gardens agricultural preservation restriction. Uh, thank you for members of that being here tonight. So, I'm interested in what the board would like to do next. One thing that, uh, occurs to me is, um, the, uh, the property owner has some plans that are, are new and different and I think it might be appropriate to have him come and explain what those are. So, that's one thing we could consider in the mix of things. It might be useful, uh, well, I guess if we're gonna take this in pieces, one thing we could do is we could see if that is, provides more satisfying to, to the commission, to us, a more satisfying situation. Something we might do after that, I would think, would be to have, uh, council come back and remind us sort of the details of what levers we have, what capabilities we have, what enforcement, you know, rights and tools that we have. But I guess I'd like to give it a chance to have the air be open for it to be a harmonious, uh, discussion before we start talking about enforcement ratchet. So, I guess I would propose that first we ask the owner to come in and explain what he's planning to do. And then, once we hear that, we can decide what to do next. I don't know, Mark, it's good to see you.
Aye, yes.
Does that, does that, we're, we're in your input. Does that seem like a good, a good next step for us to have the property owner come in and just lay out what his new plans include?
Yeah, I would think that would be a, a great first step. Um, I think I s- uh, I, I see this and I believe the agricultural commission sees this as a great opportunity for a fresh start. So, um, by, you know, extending a hand and welcoming Mr. Masaladin to come in and let us know what his plan is, I think is a great first start. And then, um, uh, you know, a follow-up with that would be, I would think, to help build something in that's yearly or bi-yearly in terms of expectations, whether it's a soil test or a site visit or an updated plan, um, on a bi-yearly, uh, basis. Um, something that keeps the relationship on a schedule that's ongoing and expected. Um, I think that would be a, uh, you know, the, the ultimate goal here.
Good. And, and I think if we're welcoming him in sort of a spirit of starting off as friendly as we can, uh, once he presents his plan, I think it'd be great if, if you'd have an opportunity to ask him any questions, specifics about what his plan means, just so we all get to a clear understanding of what the plan is.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know exactly what his plans are and, um, my sense is I'm not sure he does, uh, just to be frank. Uh, in, in our discussion, it seems to be somewhat off the cuff. Um, and, um, I, it seems like it's in reaction to our outreach from two years ago. Um, but, um, he's very friendly and very, um, charming, but, um, also very, um, not interested in moving forward. So, um, I'm just the agricultural, on the agricultural commission. I have no, no power. Um, and I think, um, coming from the select board, uh, would help clarify and make, you know, what the relationship ought to be with both, uh, his ownership of the land, the land and agriculture and that owning, um, or, um, living up to the mandate of the APR, the Agricultural Preservation Restriction. So, clarifying all that, I think would be good for him, good for us and good for the town. And also good for resale. If he's going to sell at some point, we want to make sure that that soil is, you know, well-balanced and full of organic matter and getting better year after year after year. Because if you read the APR, it, it states that that should be one of the main requirements is that, um, it's improving in quality. So, um, that'd be all good, good information to find out.
Great. Scott?
So, not, not wearing an ag hat, wearing just a sort of a town bystander hat. It seems that there's, there's two plans I'd like to hear. You know, one is the ag plan for the land. But as I drive past, I'm not, I'm not offended by a field that's, that's lying fallow. I'm offended by the building that is sitting there with a door boarded up. So, I'm kind of curious what the plan would be for the structure as well as the, the land, if it's the same plan or a different plan.
Yeah, so when we, when we make the invitation, let's, let's include both. Any other, any other things we want to include in the, in the invitation? That, that's great to add. Because I think if we're a little bit more specific, we'll probably get a little bit more information. Okay, why don't we do, why don't we do structures, sort of agricultural use planning? And, uh, we can move from there and we'll start with a fresh start attitude and see where it takes us.
Ha- has the select board received the agricultural commission's plan that, I'm sorry, Ellen Hardy, thirty-nine Main Street, um, that was put together? Was that a part of any packet that you've got or should that be included? So, that you have that for the meeting with Mr. Masaladon? I don't know if that was sent to you.
Yeah, we had a two thousand twenty-four planting plan that was part of the, uh, Article twenty-three approval at town meeting.
Okay.
That we would.
Could, if you could send that to us again, that'd be great. We'll make sure to have that in the packet. So, we'll, we'll read it before we have the meeting with you.
Okay.
We'll do that immediately so that you've got it, so Chris can include it.
It might be somewhere in there because it was on the, on the monitor at town meeting, but we'll make sure you get it.
Can you send it again?
If you could just send it again, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm sure you got a lot.
I'm sure you sent it and I'm sure.
I'm not saying you didn't send it, but if you could send it again, that would be really good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, steel trap.
And I just want to make a note that I showed up on time tonight.
No, no doubt.
It was too, it was too dark for stakes, wasn't it?
Good to see you, Mark. Okay, I, I think, are we, are we good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we assume this will be two weeks? Or do you have any window of when you think that this might be?
Sort of depends on.
Because in truth, the twenty-four growing season is not that far away if we're really going to be pushing that avenue. So.
Kristen, do you, do you have enough visibility into how dense the next one is to know if we would invite him for next, I think it'd be the next time or the time after?
I think we have availability. It's also his schedule as well.
Of course.
So, we will offer up the next two meetings?
So, we can offer up, yes.
It may go up another meeting, but it'll, it'll be soon, as soon as we can.
Great, wonderful.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Great. Uh, board reports and updates? I don't see any. Minutes for approval? Any comments on the minutes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for, to approve the regular session minutes, March fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, so can I vote on these?
No.
No, you, you should, yeah, you should stay.
No.
You should stay.
Yep.
Uh, and it's over to you, Kristen.
Sure, thank you. Um, I also have members of, uh, the land use department here, uh, if you have any questions for them. So, um, as you're aware and has been presented for the past year or so, the town of Westford is designated as an adjacent MBTA community and is required to have in place, uh, by December of twenty twenty-four zoning that would require multifamily housing by right at a certain density. Um, the land use department has, uh, done an immense amount of, uh, legwork on this and has done, um, their diligence and has presented their preliminary plan to the Department of Housing and Community Development. They were actually applauded and lauded that they had the best plan in the state, which we're very proud of. So, congratulations to the land use department.
Please, not, not surprised at all.
Um, the next phase was that the, the town of Westford was granted a housing choice grant of seventy-five thousand dollars to help us obtain a consultant to do additional visioning work, additional GIS work, uh, and help us, uh, actually formulate zoning language to bring to town meeting in March of twenty twenty-four to create the land use depart- uh, excuse me, to create the MBTA overlay zoning district or zoning district, however it's provided. Um, and then speaking with, uh, Jeff and Joe and other members, uh, we deemed it best that, uh, we would be forming a committee. Um, McMac is really, uh, the acronym, but the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Advisory Committee, uh, that I would appoint that committee. And I had spoken with Andrea when she was chair and she had kind of given me the okay to move forward with that. But we see that being comprised of a member of the planning board, a member of the, uh, Affordable Housing Trust. Excuse me, I'm just pulling up my charge, so I have that for you. A member of the planning board, select board, finance committee, economic development committee, affordable housing trust, zoning board of appeals. We have asked the school committee if they want to participate. They had it on their agenda last night and are voting on that at another. We have asked the school committee if they wanna participate. They had it on their agenda last night and are voting on that at another point in time. And then, two other members at large providing various interests and perspectives, either affordable housing advocates or developers, or landowners, or some other type of residents at large. And they would really sit in on the meetings with the consultant and help guide the process with the land use department moving forward related to this. So, really two-pronged here. Wanted to just have a gut check with the select board to make sure that everything looked okay in terms of a potential charge and moving forward with this committee. And then, asking if you would like one member of your select board to serve on this committee and move forward. Obviously, the director of land use, the town planner, and the assistant town planner will be heavily involved in this committee as well, leading the charge forward.
Thank you. Any reaction to the draft charge or?
I read that and said, for composition, you read my mind. I was like, I hope she got some from AHC. Yep, she did. I was like, yeah, it was perfect.
That was all the land use department. I can't take any credit for that.
Still very well-selected.
Yeah, I agree. It did look great. Any other, any other discussion? It seems to me like this is an important issue that we'd wanna have representation on. I, we wanna agree that we, whether we do or do not wanna rep, then we can, I think next meeting, we're gonna come back and talk about all the liaison positions and give Chris a little chance to breathe, but we'll take a look at all the different open liaison positions and which ones we wanna surrender and re-divvy them all up. So, we don't have to decide who's gonna rep with this tonight. Do folks agree that would make sense for us to have a delegate?
Yes, definitely need to, yeah.
Okay. Do you need a vote for that?
If you wa, if, I don't think I need a vote to create the charge, because I'll have that for myself. If you wanna wait until your next meeting to run a delegate, that's fine as well.
So, yeah, I think we do wanna delegate, and we'll decide when we're going through all the open assignments next time. I'm sorry, John.
When are you guys gonna crank up? You're already?
Well, we would like to start sometime in June. We're actually a little behind the schedule that we would've preferred. Just tentatively reaching out to some of the potential members so far. We think there's value to meeting in person for some of this. There could be a lot of materials, and it might be more efficient actually in person. And looking at just this meeting room availability, it seems like an occasional Thursday evening might be best in terms of availability and avoiding other board meetings. So, just throwing that out there, because that could make a difference.
And similar to the budget task force, we have going to put out the community action forum, citizen activity forum, excuse me, tomorrow for this. So, that will be out there as well.
That's great. I think we're ready to move to the next.
Great. So, there's a variety of contracts that I'll just briefly name, and then, if you have any questions, we can go back. There's actually G deals with the MBTA communities contractor, so that will dovetail. So, under contracts, we have the Northern and Middlesex Council of Governments for sealers of weights and measures for sixteen thousand five hundred. That is in the budget. We actually were using NIMCOG for that this past year, and I feel like it's been working out well based upon conversations that I've had, and I actually spoke with the sealer a few weeks ago, and he said that it was going well in town. We got our Maya insurance renewal in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars, which actually was a reduction. We had some really good numbers in terms of workers' compensation, and actually, the rates did go down. So, we actually have really good news in terms of the budget there.
That's great. Hopefully, our workers stay healthy.
Yeah, right. Mostly great because they're healthy.
Tie-in bond for professional engineering services for thirty-five thousand dollars by the water department. Weston and Sampson for preliminary design of Graniteville America Legion Field Improvement Project for a hundred and sixty thousand by the DPW. Westford Housing Authority for professional services in the amount of forty thousand seven fifty-four fiscal twenty-four, and then it moves up by year. You actually have a document in your to-sign packet this evening. The Westford Housing Authority has signed that agreement. Tie-in bond for professional engineering services and design services for three culverts at Battle Brook, Reed Brook, in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred by DPW. Dotson and Flinker, which was the chosen contractor for the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing, which we received the housing choice money from for seventy-five thousand dollars for the land use management department. And then, I can move on to purchase orders, or if there's any questions on contracts, I'm happy to take those.
Any questions for Kristen on contracts?
So, purchase orders. There is a typo here on the first one. I apologize for that. Sanofi Pastore for flucozone high dose instead of does equivalent. This is the flu vaccine for the health department for twenty-nine thousand thirty-five dollars. McGovern Municipal for two twenty-twenty-two Ford hybrids in the amount of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four. And a Chevy Tahoe twenty-twenty-three for fifty-two four forty-seven for the police department. This was under the capital for town meeting. That is all I have this evening.
Do you have a question? Christina Green has a question about the Chevy, about the police purchases?
In the Q and A, right at the hand?
In the Q and A.
In the Q and A, okay, thanks. Christina Green writes, why is the police department purchasing a Chevy Tahoe instead of a third hybrid? During the budget hearings, it was stated that all three vehicles purchased would be hybrids.
I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so do you wanna pull that one?
If we can hold the Tahoe.
Hold the Tahoe, but vote the other two?
Yep. Thanks, Christina. Good catch. So, that brings us to the end. So, I'll entertain a motion for contracts and purchase orders approval as amended by removing the Tahoe for now.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to waive the reading correspondence.
So moved.
So moved.
Stand here a second?
A second.
All in favor? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?